As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda.
It's 4:58, we're okay to start or should we wait? Adam, it's 4:58, are we okay to start? Okay. Call this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors, regular meeting to order. Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mr. Powell, how are you?
Good afternoon.
If you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Reisner.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Adler.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson. Here. We have no presentations this afternoon?
No ma'am.
All right, is there any public comment today?
No speaker cards.
Thank you. Consent calendar consists of minutes to adopt, may have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We have no public hearings today. Under board considerations, we have a contract award and budget amendment for $774,900 enterprise software system. Mr. Powell, you'll give the staff presentation?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. JCSA's fiscal year '23 CIP includes $500,000 for an enterprise software system that will replace several separate computer systems that we currently have for billing, maintenance management, work orders, asset management, that type of thing. This replacement software will be a more modern system, it will improve the level of service to customers and improve efficiency and effectiveness, and it will integrate all those functions into one. JCSA customers will, once this is implemented, JCSA customers will receive their bill directly from JCSA and not Harubbs. So from the public's perspective, that is the biggest, the biggest component that they will see from this new software system. After a RFP process, Spry Point was chosen as the most qualified firm. The negotiated contract price was $774,900. In order to fund the difference, this resolution amends the fiscal year '23 budget by transferring funds from the Mirror Lakes Dam project, which was canceled, and the consent order report preparation, which has already been completed. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, awarding the contract to Spry Point and amending the budget, as, as mentioned previously, for total contract award of $774,900.
Thank you. Are there questions, staff? I just had a couple of questions. One, since you mentioned the bill pay, recently Hampton Roads has allowed, they've added the convenience of Venmo, PayPal, will we be able to do those with this new system?
I believe so, Ms. Larson, this is, this has a lot of bells and whistles that I think will be, there are a lot of improvements that the customers will see in their, in their ability to monitor their, their usage and their bills and that sort of thing, and I, I do think that, that ease of payment is part of it, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then is, I assume the contract provides training for our employees?
Yes.
Because getting used to something new?
Yes, yes, I, I do think, I do think the implementation is, you know, it, it will be a challenge, this is a big project. The, the, the proposal calls for a 14-month implementation schedule, which includes data conversion, training, and, and all of that. Based on experiences I've had with these types of systems in the past, I think that's probably optimistic. And, you know, I do, I do think it will be a, it, it's a significant, it's a significant project, and I think it will take some time to implement, but training is definitely part of the, part of, part of the project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I, I just ask one other question, and that is, you mentioned that we'll be providing our own billing, will that mean that people will get a separate bill for sewer from Hampton Roads sanitation?
That's currently the plan, yes, that is, that's the plan as of now, that could always change, but for the moment, it appears HRSD wants to, wants to keep that, keep that function. That we will still provide them with our meter reading, but yes, as of now, the customer will receive a separate bill from Harubbs for the HRSD component of their bill.
So that's probably going to require a little bit of education, so people don't pay a sewage bill, but then thinking that they're paying their water, though it would be drastically different in price.
Right.
So, did you have a question?
Yeah, one other question, and that had to do with, as this new system comes online, we have the ability to, I hope, tweak or form, the format of our, of our new billing system, because one of the biggest complaints I've had from constituents in the past is, you get your bill and you read it, and even I'm supposed to know what it says, and I struggle sometimes trying to figure out what it means, especially when you do a conversion from one fiscal year to another, and it's a different rate and things like that, trying to figure out exactly how you're getting charged, so it, I, I don't, I don't know what plans are afoot, but I would encourage strongly that we really try to make this thing as user-friendly as possible, so that it's more intuitive to the customers.
Yes, sir, that is the goal, yes.
Okay, I'll look.
A move that we approve the contract award and the budget amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Ms. Reisner.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Board request and directives this evening, all right, general manager's update.
Just one item, I did want to inform the board that we did receive the fiscal year '23 GFO, a distinguished budget award again this year, so thanks to Ms. Luton, especially for all of her work on the budget, and this award is an affirmation of that good work, so.
Congratulations.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment?
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any names, thank you, the motion carries, we will adjourn until 5:00 PM on October 11th, 2022, for our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
I'll call the order, this meeting is the James City County Board of Supervisors for a regular meeting. Mr. Stevens, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Reisner.
Here.
Ms. Reisner represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Ms. Adler.
Here.
Ms. Adler represents the Stonehouse District and is vice chair to the board. Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District and is chair to the board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney, I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
We usually begin our meetings with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we ask a young person in the community to lead us in the pledge each meeting. Today, that young person is from the Berkeley District, and so I'll turn it over to Ms. Larson to introduce him.
Thank you so much, I am pleased to introduce Tommy Estes. Tommy is a fifth grader at Stonehouse Elementary, where his mother is also a fifth grade teacher. With him this evening are his sisters, Maddie and Ally, or Alice is his youngest sister. Tommy is interested and plays soccer, he did the Flyers First Colony Swim Team this year, and he is in the Kiwanis Kids Club. He was the K-Club's treasurer, and last year he was the SCA treasurer. So, thank you very much for coming out, Tommy, and if you'll just give us a moment, for a moment of silence, and then do the pledge, and then if you'll come up, I have a certificate for you.
Can I make the mic go farther down? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll come around to you.
She's coming. Great.
Thank you.
this evening, and we have one card this evening for public comment, and it is a familiar and always welcome face, Peg Borman.
Good afternoon, I'm Peg Borman from Seventeen Settlers Lane, downtown Lightfoot. I, thank you, Mr. Chairman McGlinnan, members of the board, and Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Kinsman, and all the ladies and gentlemen out here, I'm happy to, to be back again after you all have been gone a month, and I trust it was a, a good month for you all to take a break. It's, I'm always pleased to come before you and talk trash, because, you know, trash is not a good thing, but I can still talk about it. Anyway, but I want to say thank you to all of them, to all of you out there that do the right thing when they see trash, they pick it up, they take it wherever it needs to go, either to a trash can or to a convenience center, and I've had folks that will call me and say, I've just found these mattresses outside the road, what should I do? And I said, well, we can either do this, or we can do that, and then they'll say, well, how about I just take it to the convenience center? So I call out there and I say, somebody's bringing this, so I hope that, but they always send me pictures and things, so that I know that, where it's coming from, so I really appreciate the fact that people do that. I guess because I've been talking trash so long that they think I'm, I'm an expert on it, but anyway, but, but it's nice to know that people do, do things when they need to, and especially when those that do the wrong thing by throwing it out there, and dumping it, or whatever, well, we've had Oak Tree Hunt Club call me the other day and said they had found a big stash of stuff out there off of one of their, the roads that leads into their hunt club. I said, well, you know what to do with it, so, anyway, but we all need to be stewards of, of this planet Earth that we call home, because if it's gone, we're, we're not much left for us, so, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Clean County Commission. We just gave our third award, we do it quarterly, and it's a business, Clean Business Award, and I was happy to have Mr. Eisenhower and Ms. Adler join us the last time, and we're always happy to have all of you come and join us whenever you can. We, if you have a know of a business or something that's doing a good job of recycling and doing things with the trash, please let us know, it's, you can go on the website and, and nominate them, and the la, the, the three nominees, the three that we've given this year was the Homestead Gardens, Sweet Lavender Farms, and Noah's Ark, and we're, we're trying to build a bank with other people, other businesses, so be sure to nominate them from, I try to go through the county and see if I can find them in different parts of the county, but I'm not the only one that looking for it, you should be looking for it too, and anybody out there that's hearing me should be looking for it, but, but I'm, I'm going to say yay, applaud, we have, happy to report that we have an applicant from Powhatan. I'm so happy, we, we've got all precincts covered now, so, but we're always looking for somebody else, because there's, we, we don't, we couldn't function with just four or five of us, we need more than that, so, thank you for, for doing that. Our next thing on the calendar is Recycling Expo and Fix-It Fair, November 19th, at Warhill High School, so stay tuned for that. And just a little FYI, James City Ruettan Club is holding a gospel concert, a bluegrass concert, with Solid Rock on Saturday, the 17th of September, 7 o'clock, at Jamestown Presbyterian Church on Ironbound Road, tickets will be available at, at the door, or you can get them from me, and when, it's one of our fundraisers from the club, so, again, thank you very much, and I'll talk trash another time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Borman, and you always manage to complete your talk within the time limit, fantastic, okay. We now have a consent calendar, two items, first is a grant award of $35,849 for the Circuit Court Records Preservation Project, and then the second are salary and incentive adjustments, public safety personnel, and I think before we go on to that, I'll just ask Mr. Stevens to, to talk about that, that item, and we can move the two together.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, a couple of things I would mention, just in public safety and talking about retention of police officers, we're down vacancy-wise, 13 positions, which is not unusual for the region, but is certainly unusual for us. You approved adjustments to our starting salaries and pay for all employees in April of this year, which moved our starting salary to somewhere just below $42,000 to $47,000. These recommendations would take that starting salary up to closer to 51, which is more comparable in our region, along with some other adjustments for our existing staffs, so what's being recommended is across the board, 5% increase for our full-time sworn law enforcement officers, an increase in our EMS intermediate and paramedic salary incentives for firefighters, going from $3,000 and $6,000 to $6,000 and $12,000. You had implemented this $3,000 and $6,000 some years ago, it made a significant difference in our retention of those highly skilled and trained paramedics that come to our homes and service our community, other localities have caught with that, retention of those staff has been difficult, and training them is about a two-year process, so retention of those staff is important to us, and we believe this will make a significant effort in retention and maybe attracting some others to us. We have a salary incentive for education for our full-time sworn law enforcement officers of $1,500 for an associate's degree, $3,000 for a bachelor's degree, a shift differential for our midnight shift officers of $1.50 an hour while they're on midnight shift, and adjustments in our police career ladder program, which results in an additional 2.5% increase for our starting salaries, but takes 2.5% away from our third year in the career development, which is about at the five-year timeframe for our officers, an implementation of a $5,000 signing bonuses, which is not unusual in the region, with the vacancy rate we have today, I don't see this being a forever incentive, but I do think until we have more applicants coming towards us, having the signing bonus is comparable to what other localities have implemented, and I think would help in our attraction, and then we'll also be increasing officers that recruit other officers, we have typically given a $500 bonus for recruiting, recruiting hard-to-fill positions, we would move that up to a $2,000 amount there, so those are the changes that are before you tonight.
Thank you very much, and I think it's clear the board understands that we've been very fortunate over the years to be able to have an excellent recruitment and retention record in the community, but we're facing unprecedented times and challenges, especially in, in making sure that our public safety offices are maintained at full strength, and so these seem to be good efforts to address those challenges. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One comment before we go any further, I'd, I'd like to thank the county administrator for his efforts, and also the police chief for his efforts, and starting this back in January, and, and this starting to come alive then, and what can we do, and of course, as everybody knows, government moves slow, a lot slower than we up here want it to move, but I'm, I'm glad we came to the point where we were able to do something for our dedicated officers, and, and talked to a lot of different officers, and, and some active and, and some not active now, and I think we've come up with a good plan here as a start, and I just want to, you know, give credit to the county administrator and our police chief for heading this up, and leading us in the direction we need to go in order to, to bring us up to where the rest of the area is, and even though it's always hard to, you know, give everybody the money that we know they need and deserve, and, and we've always got to watch our budgets, just like we do at home, and, but, you know, for what our officers put out on the street, and what they do to keep our community safe, I want to say thank you to the officers that are here, and thank you to officers that are listening, I'm, I'm sure they're all watching the TV right now at home, except the ones on duty, but, thank you, I just wanted to put that plug in for y'all's hard work, and what both of you have done to try to get this ahead, thank you.
If I could add on to that, I, I know Mr. Stevens has spoken with us regularly, ever since he's come on board here, about what we can do to better help our first responders especially, and all of our staff, we value everyone that helps us out here in the county, but Mr. Stevens, along with Chief, and I know Mr. Reinheimer, have all been working for months and months and months, trying to help navigate on a better way to provide for, for you guys to not only say thank you for your service, but to compensate you accordingly, so I know I can speak for everyone here, that we all appreciate everything that you do, but thank you, Mr. Stevens and Chief, for, again, heading this up and making sure that everyone is looked after, and that we can do everything we can to help in the process, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, yes, I also want to thank Chief Ash for, for recognizing the work that our EMS have been doing. I think it's no secret how I feel about law enforcement and first responders as a whole, the people that put their lives on the line for this community, I would just urge our community to be very careful, sometimes we want to lump everyone together, I'm a very person that's, it was fact, it was Brad Reinheimer, when there was a, a national conversation going on about what was happening with police, he said, there's bad police, like there's bad sandwich makers, like there's bad ice cream scoopers, but to lump everybody into the same pile is a huge mistake, we are so very fortunate to have the people, the men and women that are protecting the citizens in this county, and really in this region, and I include our fire EMS in that as well, and so, you know, I would just ask that if you're ever somewhere and there's a conversation going on, make sure that we talk about the positivity that is out there, because there is a lot of positivity, and we are so fortunate that not only our police, our fire, our EMS, our employees, they do so much to give back to this, this county, and I'm so appreciative of that, and recently I was at a VACO conference, and one thing that was said, because I think we forget that when times were tough, often those that, the private sector gives raises, but what happens often in county government, or any type of government for that, the people that take the brunt of that are employees, they are not given a raise, they have to, they wait, now, we went a few years here, which didn't help the situation that we're in, so I do appreciate all the work that the administration has done to get us there, but we must remember that we must care for those that care for our citizenry, so, thank you.
Ms. Reisner.
I, I would add, for the benefit of the public, I don't think many people in our county know, for such a large county, almost 80,000 people, how few police officers and firefighters we have, and these folks are covering a lot of ground, and they're doing a lot of good work for us, and they meet themselves coming and going, you know, it's around-the-clock shifts, we have, I think, a little over 100 sworn officers and 110 or so like that firefighters, I think I'm in the ballpark for an 80,000 county, so they really do good work for us, and I'm very proud to support this.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. And now, if I can have somebody, uh...
Move the motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Stevens, call roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Move on to our first public hearing, and this is a lease of property, uh, at 2054 Jamestown Road, lease agreement with Hampton Marine Services Corporation. And, uh, we're going to have, um, oh, okay. Ms. Param.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, before you is a two-year lease agreement for a portion of the Jamestown Marina to Hampton Marine Services. Uh, this lease will allow Hampton Marine Services to continue the operation of its boat repair business, uh, for the convenience of Marina patrons. Uh, the proposed lease is largely under the same terms as the prior lease with a 3% annual increase in the rent, and staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we do that, maybe let's have Mr. Rogers present, uh, from the Planning Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, just, uh, any... Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I had that, uh, gotcha. Okay, so any questions for Ms. Param? Ms. Param.
Thank you.
Yes.
Off to a good start. No questions? Okay. All right, uh, do we have any items for the public hearing? We, um, open the public hearing, and the speaker cards will close the public hearing. And what's the board's, uh, preference?
Motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Uh, Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now let's get back on track here. Uh, first, I just mentioned that our Planning Commission representative here, Steve Rogers, uh, from the Berkeley District, uh, will comment on cases presenting the, uh, results of the Planning Commission considerations. Uh, we start with Z210012 and MP21003, 0003, proffer and master plan amendment for the continuing care retirement facility at Ford's Colony, Ford's Village. Mr. Weisong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. Mr. Vernon Geddy has applied on behalf of Frye Development to amend the adopted master plan and proffers for the continuing care retirement community at Ford's Colony. The subject parcel is a residential planned community, R4, is inside the primary service area, and is designated low-density residential on the adopted comprehensive plan, which does recommend this use. In 2008, this parcel was rezoned from R8 rural residential to R4 residential planned community with proffers to permit a continuing care retirement community known as the Village at Ford's Colony. This currently approved CCRC for this property permits up to 741 units, rooms, and beds, and is accompanied by proffers intended, excuse me, to mitigate community impacts. In the initial version prepared for the board's consideration in January of this year, the applicant had proposed to amend the approved master plan and proffers by reducing the total number of units, rooms, and beds from 741 to 516, and had also proposed to change the layout of the site. Of this 516, the applicant had proposed up to 286 age-restricted single-family and multifamily dwelling units, and up to an additional 230 age-restricted units, rooms, and beds within the facility portion of this property. Since the January board meeting, the applicant has proposed a further reduction in units on site. This revised proposal would reduce the total number of units, rooms, and beds to 470 overall, with up to 270 age-restricted single-family and multifamily dwelling, multifamily dwelling units, and up to 200 age-restricted units, rooms, and beds within the facility portion of the property. The proffers have been updated to include a unit mixture cap on the facility portion of the property, which would allow up to 75 apartments in the facility portion, and no more than 125 assisted living rooms, memory care rooms, or skilled nursing beds. The major changes to the proffers include the updating of the current contribution amount for community impacts, the addition of a proffer requiring a traffic signal warrant analysis for the proposed main entrance to the development, the addition of a construction phasing proffer, and the revision of stormwater commitments. The applicant is also proposing to remove certain proffers, including the completion of the cold spring swamp drainage analysis and the greenway trail proffer. If approved, this amendment would reduce the density on the subject parcel from 4.77 units per acre to 2.76 dwelling units per acre. This proposal would also result in a marginal decrease within the overall density of Ford's Colony, from 1.36 units per acre to 1.28 units per acre. Since the board agenda was published, the applicant has worked with the county and submitted revised proffers to clarify the application of these proffers in terms of substance and timing. At its December 1st regular meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of five to one. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends the board approve this proposed amendment. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant team is with us tonight, and I believe they do have a presentation prepared as well. Thank you.
If I could just roll, yeah, real quick.
Sure.
What is this, just the grand total, units before and units now, overall? I know you broke it down, I was getting confused.
Gotcha.
Didn't have my calculator out.
So, the currently approved master plan would allow 741 overall.
Okay.
And if this were approved tonight, the new total amount would be 470.
Okay. And then this was, this is, so this was already approved back in, you said, 2008?
Yes, ma'am.
So, from that, from 2008 to now, we have the reduction plus the improvements with environmental? And would it be fair to say that with the reduction, you have less of a strain on public services such as police, fire, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. There's a decrease in the total number of units, which would result in a lesser impact.
Okay. And just to confirm, inside of the PSA is where we usually recommend development go, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Questions? Not, Mr. Rogers, would you mind?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, supervisors.
Mr. Rogers, welcome. I think this is your first, uh, representation before us.
It's my first presentation, and I wasn't there by the time. Just to make sure we all...
Yeah, when they were saying, I was like, he wasn't there.
Know where I'm coming from, but I, I did, uh, watch on TV. And, uh, as was stated, the Planning Commission voted five to one to recommend approval, and the, really, the key discussion topics at that meeting seemed to center on just a, a few points there. The first, which I think Ms. Sadler just keyed in on, was that there was already an approved CCRC on the parcel that seemed, um, larger, that had a lot more residential units, and didn't seem to address stormwater or traffic mitigation, as well as this newer proposal. There were some concerns discussed in, in the discussion about the adequacy of News Road to be able to handle increased construction traffic during the building phase, and there were suggestions made that the applicant look into mitigation measures affecting the hours of operation, when they were gonna use their shuttles, and when their heavy equipment was gonna, going to move. One of the commissioners had a concern that it seemed some of the original proffers were perhaps more protective of upstream portion properties, and they requested at the time that the stormwater division of the county look for further assurances. And so it sort of sounded like you spoke to that, if I, if I got that correctly. And lastly, there was a suggestion, uh, by your Planning Commission that a second access should be included for resident use in an emergency situation. And with that, they voted five to one to forward it on to you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rogers? Okay. Not? Thank you very much, and I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to, to make a presentation. Mr. Geddy?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Geddy of 1177 Jamestown Road, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight representing the applicant team. Also here with Frye Properties are the owner and CEO, Bart Frye, and Director of Development, Vice President of Development, Rock Bell. Also here with Retirement Unlimited, the operator of the Morgan facility, is Mr. William Frayland, Jr., the CEO of Retirement Unlimited. Jason Grimes, who you all know with AES, is here as well. Frye Properties is based in Norfolk. The pretty picture you see is its headquarters in the Freemason section of Norfolk. They are in the land development business, the home construction business, realty, and have a apartment construction, ownership, and management division. Their two signature developments in this area are the East Beach Development in Norfolk and the Cavalier Residences in Virginia Beach. These developments have been award-winning developments from national organizations for their quality and design. Um, and the way they do that, they have world-class master planners that create pedestrian-scale streetscapes, they use great architecture, placemaking, they respect the land, you'll see the, how the development is worked around existing trees, and they create a quality of life. Our RUI story began in 1962, when Horace Frayland and Albert Waldron got together and began the Frayland and Waldron Companies. RUI itself was formed in 1982 in the, um, senior living area, and it is now in its third generation of family leadership. Mr. Frayland is the third generation running the company at this point. Um, and it, I will say, they are an economic powerhouse in southwestern Virginia. Um, RUI has ten communities in Virginia, um, in Virginia Beach, Newport News, the Haydenwood, they've actually been operating for close to 38 years at this point, uh, facilities in Richmond and also northern Virginia. Recently, they have gotten into the Florida market and bought a number of, uh, facilities in Florida. This is the existing approved master plan, uh, that was approved in 2008. You'll see the number of large institutional buildings in it with a scattering of duplexes, uh, and it does have 741 approved units, and this can be built by right today. And I would suggest, given the increasing demand for quality senior living in this area and, and this region, and the scarcity of property-zoned land, that it would develop. I think it absolutely would develop. So, fast forward to 2022, this is the new master plan, and you will see here is the Morgan facility and the independent, uh, living homes that surround the rest of the property. When the Planning Commission heard this, there were 516 total units, it's now been reduced to 470. Uh, 270 in the, uh, I call it the Frye section of the development, and 200 in the Morgan. And this is a chart, um, from the staff report that gives you the exact breakdown. Vision for Ford's Village is a superior-designed, quality housing, high standard of living with amenities and facilities that enhance the long-term living environment for its residences. The services and amenities will be shared by the Frye portion of the property and the Morgan, and it creates a unique relationship, and it gives residents a variety of living options that will suit their needs at that point in their life. Uh, the homes will utilize sustainable green building techniques. As noted, it is an age-restricted community. The homes will be semi-custom designed, uh, using classically-trained architects with a pattern book that must be followed for each different variety of housing. And as I'll show you shortly, there will be a variety of housing types of different sizes and price points. Um, all the houses will include universal design features such as elevators or elevator shafts, wider hallways, backing for grab bars, um, to allow folks, to the extent they want to, to age in place in their home. Um, and the master plan is based on traditional town-making principles. It has narrow streets, alley-loaded garages, and a multitude of parks and paths. This is a different model than we're used to seeing around here in life care communities, Williamsburg Landing, for example. There are no large entrance fees in the Morgan. Um, it is a month-to-month lease arrangement, and that does two things. It's less of a burden for a resident to move into the Morgan. It also means the Morgan needs to have an intense focus on service and quality to retain its residents. In the Frye independent living sections, as opposed to the right-to-occupy arrangement you have in most life care communities, people will actually own or could rent, uh, your home. As I mentioned, and I'll detail them in a moment, there are shared amenities and services available on a fee or subscription basis, working both ways in the development. And the folks that live in the Frye independent living homes, if there is a waiting list to get into the Morgan, um, as opposed to the general public, they will have a priority to get into the facility. Um, so it will really operate like a life care community, just different ownerships. It gives consumers a different choice, um, in the marketplace. And frankly, the applicants are so excited by this model, they're already working on replicating it elsewhere in the state. So the shared services and amenities that are available to everybody through the RUI facility include fine dining, the bar lounge, café bistro, salon spa, fitness and wellness services, their classes offered through what's called the RUI University, their lifetime learning programs, activities, physical therapy, things like linen service, housekeeping, meal delivery, transportation, and access to ancillary providers, nurse practitioners, home health, even hospice services. Through the Frye portion, folks will have availability to the clubhouse, pool, fitness facilities, pickleball courts, the paths and trails and parks, the event spaces, and all those. So it functions as a unified community. A couple of things I'll point out on the new master plan, the main entrance circled in red here is at, across from the Firestone entrance to Ford's Colony on News Road. Um, the yellow circle is around an entrance that is an emergency access-only entrance. The potential, if it was approved by the county in VDOT, to become a full-service entrance is there, um, but the intent is it would be an emergency access. Um, you'll see there's the full 150-foot community character corridor along the front of the property, and then the latest reduction in the number of units, these are the two areas that the single-family homes were removed, both creating more open space and pulling the development further away from the adjacent neighborhood. Um, show you a few renderings just to give you an idea of the feel and quality of the development. If it works, and it might not, they would love to have an entrance that actually goes under an apartment. It's something their master planners are excited about, and we'll, we'll see. Um, going down the main street, I can get my fingers working. Give you an idea of the streetscape and the variety of housing types. Further down the street, that's a potential, uh, rendering of the clubhouse in the center brick building there. Um, they have a feature here on this part of the property that's based on a development in Bruges, Belgium. It's a walled courtyard of townhouses surrounding an open green. And here's the rendering of what that might look like here. Uh, this is going down to the furthest point of the development, and this is a rendering of an alley view, one of the alleys that would go behind the house, as you can see garage doors there, just loaded from the alley. Throughout the parks and open spaces, unique pedestrian gateways are incorporated. It helps just create a sense of place and entry. There'll be eight... There'll be eight different home types I'll touch on quickly. Manor homes appear as large houses, but actually would have four units in each of these houses. There are traditional single-family homes, twenty-two hundred to three thousand square feet. There are then cottages, a little smaller, village houses are a little smaller still. And there are a couple of types of townhouses, detached townhouses with very small spaces between the actual homes, and then the typical attached townhouses. What they are calling muse buildings, which typically face a park or courtyard, are thirteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet. And then finally, small muse and bungalows, eight hundred to a thousand square feet, that are proven to be incredibly popular and successful in their East Beach development. RUI design, this was actually the RUI facility of the Wellington at Lake Manassas, Virginia. Exterior of that facility, and then interior shots, you see the dining hall, activity rooms and the like. You have the workout room, a classroom, the salon. You get an idea of the fits and finishes and quality of the facility. Now, these are architectural renderings by their architects of the Morgan itself. Independent living wing on this side and the assisted living area on the right. Entrance there. This is the independent living courtyard. You may have noticed on the master plan, each, the independent living has a separate courtyard, and the assisted living has a separate courtyard. This is the assisted living facade. Assisted living courtyard. Much briefly on a couple of issues. Stormwater management was mentioned. Since the original plan was approved, there are entirely new stormwater management regulations that the state and county has updated as well. So there's a new stormwater management plan with this plan. It utilizes a series of proven best management practices, such as bio-retention pond, filteras, dry swales, and other low-impact design features, and traditional wet ponds. Your Palatine Creek watershed study calls for seven special stormwater criteria measures to be provided, which of course are, but they've gone on to provide five additional SSC measures to further improve water quality and environmental protection. The existing plan, with its large institutional buildings and large parking fields, relied entirely on infiltration for its stormwater management system, using extensive porous pavement. That was an untried system at the time. So there were some proffers that are no longer needed about stream monitoring based on concerns over whether that system would actually work. The News Road Cold Springs Swamp Study has been done. VDOT has done a project that has alleviated the flooding issues there. Traffic, this proposal generates significantly less traffic than the existing approved plan. All the same, and all the required traffic improvements are still proffered. Left-turn lanes at Firestone, right-turn lane at Firestone, some restriping, a left-turn lane westbound on Palatine Secondary entrance. If VDOT can acquire them necessarily right away, and traffic signals both at the project entrance and at the Palatine Secondary entrance, when and if warranted. And there are two failsafes worked into the traffic proffers. Right out of the box, there'll be a new traffic signal warrant analysis done at the entrance, the Firestone entrance and our entrance, that will confirm whether or not a stoplight is needed there at present. Before more than four hundred units can be completed, there'll have to be updated traffic counts done in checking that the trip generation projections were correct, and if there's more than a ten percent variance, it triggers some new improvement. That will have to be done at that time. So there are two checks and balances in there. So in conclusion, we agree with the staff report and recommendation by the planning commission. By any measure, this proposal is superior to the existing approved plan. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's inside the primary service area. You've seen the letter of support from the board of the Ford's Colony Home Owners Association, and the Fry folks are getting a number of inquiries from folks who live in Ford's Colony wanting to reserve spots in the development. It's a significantly less intense development than the improved plan. Two hundred and seventy-one fewer units, more open space, generates less traffic, and again, the needed improvements are all proffered. It generates a positive fiscal impact for the county of approximately one-point-eight-eight million dollars a year. There are no schoolchildren to pay for. Potential impacts are mitigated by the proffers. You've seen in the staff report, the applicant has been extraordinarily willing to put in proffers to address issues as they've been raised as late as yesterday. The project will have a superior design, superior architecture, and will help meet a growing demand for quality senior living and services in the community. And you have two premier Virginia-based companies known for their extremely high-quality work. They're companies you want doing business in James City County, and you'll be proud of the product they produce. So with that, we would ask you to approve the applications, and of course, be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Getty. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I had a couple. Mr. Getty, who builds what? In other words, after listening to your presentation, it sounds to me like maybe Fry builds everything, and RUI just operates the Morgan. Or is RUI going to be a separate entity building its own building separate from Fry?
RUI will build its own building. Fry's responsibility will be to grade the site for them in the first phase of construction, and then RUI takes it from there.
Okay, all right. That helps clear that up for me. The other question I had, just a couple of them. You have shared services and amenities, yet the two halves of this are operated independently. Although they coordinate and share services, they're totally, they are separate entities for operation.
They're separate entities, exactly.
Okay, that's correct. And the Fry property would have houses that would be for sale, or will there be any for rent in the Fry property at all?
I think that's possible.
We don't know for sure.
Don't know for sure.
So it could be all for sale, or it could be a mixture. We just, whatever comes out.
Sure.
Okay. And we know that there's going to be an HOA for the Fry property.
Yes, absolutely.
Obviously, there's no, with a rental set up for the month-to-month with the Morgan, that's a totally separate type of setup. It doesn't have any kind of, I guess you would have sort of a residents council of some sort, but it's not like an HOA.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And the last question I have for right now is, how many stories are the buildings for the Morgan plan to be?
Three stories.
Okay, no height waiver request?
No, no height waiver request.
All right. Thank you. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not this time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Getty, I just have a couple of quick ones. Can you refresh my memory about skilled care?
Skilled nursing.
Right.
Yeah. The zoning permits skilled nursing, but it is not a part of the initial plan. It requires a certificate of public need from the state that would not be forthcoming right now.
So we don't expect that there would be a demonstrated need for that at this time?
I don't think so, no. I think you'll find most other...
That wasn't the original proposal, that it did include skilled.
Correct, it did in 2008.
Right, right, okay. And, you know, one of the issues that we're constantly dealing with is the fact that our population is very reliant on workers who typically are not highly paid, service workers like CNAs in healthcare and others who may, you know, be essential to the functioning of the community but don't command terribly large salaries. Is there anything in your proposal that would address the need in the county for affordable housing?
What is in there is, in the Morgan, two beds reserved, it's a carryforward of the existing proffers at prices under a state program for basically affordable senior services.
But nothing really in terms of...
With respect to the houses, no. There is not.
And I think that those were two of the concerns that I just wanted to kind of understand a little bit better in the proposal here and the changes that we're talking about.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the other speaker cards then, and the first card I have is David Hertzler. Hertzler, yes, sir. Nice to see you, Mr. Hertzler. If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself by name and address.
David Hertzler, three-four-eight-two News Road. And the subdivision drawing is beautiful. I've got no problem with that. The traffic already is overwhelming on News Road. Greenspring Ruse that use it, News Road. People coming down Centerville use New Road to get over to Monticello. It is outstanding, the amount of traffic on there, and to get more traffic without widening that road or something, something has to give because it cannot stand more I'm overwhelmed by the whole thing. I just have to say, I wish I could say a positive. I did say one positive thing. The subdivision looks nice, but they haven't addressed the traffic like they should address it because the traffic is crazy. It's just crazy traffic. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzler.
I wish I had written a lot of things down, but there's a lot of things I don't hear because I've gotten about as old as the Queen, but anyhow.
Well, you're hanging in there, Mr. Hertzler. Good to see you today, too.
Doing better than the Queen.
Whoa.
Well, just saying right now.
Channing Hall.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Channing Hall, 1147B Professional Drive. I'm the counsel for the Hockaday Parcel Owners. They're the daughters and grandchildren of John and Sarah Warburton. The Warburton family has lived in James City County since at least 1664, when Thomas Warburton patented the core of the Pine Woods Parcel, which the family has owned continuously since that time, and where their seventeenth-century home place, the Pine Woods House, still stands. Generations of Warburtons have been good and careful stewards of their lands, and they've contributed to the vitality of the community. Before you are our letters of March 17th and August the 21st, but please indulge my brief summary. Now that the Fry proposal has been reduced in density by an almost additional nine percent for a total reduction of two-hundred-and-seventy-one units, the time has come to approve it. Hockaday is a rough, old timber tract acquired by John Warburton in the 1920s and used by him in the harvesting of trees in his timber and lumber business. It has now outlived its usefulness for that purpose. Its destiny shifted elsewhere when placed into the PSA by the county. So let's refresh and repurpose this idle timberland as a high-quality, age-restricted, residential and CCRC community, carefully crafted by Fry, tailored to our gray demographics, and dovetailing with the needs of the residents of adjoining subdivisions as they age out of their homes. Indeed, an enduring amenity for the entire county. Now, Fry is a Virginia firm of sterling character, creative vision, and superlative aesthetic sensibilities, with a great track record, particularly at the much-heralded East Beach and Cavalier Residences communities. We have vetted them at great length. We also strictly scrutinized their CCRC partner, Retirement Unlimited, and the Frayland family. They, too, are Virginia denizens of unimpeachable character and the very highest repute, to whom equally high accolades are ascribed, and they create award-winning senior living arrangements of the first order. I can personally vouch for the Fraylands. We have here two high-quality, established Virginia businesses, both leaders in their fields. That gives us, and should give you all, great comfort. They do things the right way, and I think they'll do right by James City County. We believe that the finished product will be a 21st-century Warburton legacy, of which both the family and their neighbors can all be proud. So please join Fry and Frayland in letting the next chapter for the Hockaday Parcel unfold as Ford's Village, a unique retirement enclave unlike any other we have here, in the spirit of responsible and deliberate growth by high-caliber folks, rather than some fly-by-night, quick-in-and-out cookie cutter speculators for the benefit of this special community, which has nurtured so many Warburtons over four centuries. John and Sarah Warburton would not want it any other way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Chairman, Board. John Wrights, I live at 4048 Palatine Secondary, the wrong side of News Road, if you will. I have to make a left turn out of my housing area to come down to get to Monticello Avenue, but that's okay. I've lived here in Williamsburg for seventy-five years, not as long as the Warburtons have been here, but I have seen a lot of growth in the area, you know, seen Newtown, High Street, Kings Mill, Governor's Land, all the new housing areas that have come into existence here in James City County. I consider them to be a plus. People will talk to me, they will say, what do you think of the growth in the county? And my standard reply to them is, if we didn't have growth in this county, I probably never would have met you, because most of the people have come here from somewhere else. They don't have an argument against that. There's nothing they can say, because it is the truth. I think that this is a quality program that is being presented here tonight, a wonderful development. I've attended all the meetings that they've had, talking about what they're going to do. I think that they need it. The county, the area, needs it. We're all growing older, we're all going to be there someday when we're going to need help, and to have a continuing care-type of facility is very much needed, along with the others that we already have in the area. My wife and I have been looking around. There are other areas where our grandkids live, they don't have this type of facilities. So what would we do if we tried to move to where they are? I can say, I'm on the wrong side of News Road. Hopefully, VDOT, and I see that there was a proposal, there may be a stoplight at Palatine Secondary and maybe at Firestone. Hopefully, that will come to fruition. Hopefully, something can be done with News Road, but I'm probably one of the few that's totally in agreement with this. It should be a project that should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wrights, Kevin Fleming?
Hello, my name is Kevin Fleming. I live at 228 Old Carriage Way. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. You know, this particular topic was not on the list of public hearings, and so I had contacted... contacted Jim just to make sure that it was on the agenda and it would happen. You've heard from me before because, you know, for months, a group of us from Palatine Secondary and from other neighborhoods in the community were coming to these meetings to speak publicly. The last time I've gotten a chance to speak publicly on this topic was at the December 1 meeting of the Planning Commission, and, and I did so. And there are about a dozen people who spoke at that meeting. In preparation for this meeting, after I spoke with, after I communicated with Jim, I went on the website, thedocuments.jamcitycounty.vaa.gov, so that I could see the minutes for that meeting. There are no minutes for that December 1 meeting there. So much to my chagrin, I'm here pretty upset still. From June to now, I talked about the communication and how the process needs to be improved. What you've succeeded in doing, and I don't believe that you really wanted to do this, was to shut down communication from our community at Palatine Secondary. You haven't heard from the people that you heard from on December 1 at the Planning Commission, and since those minutes aren't even public, I don't believe you've even seen those minutes or read the commentary that was made by the people who were at that meeting. And so I'm really upset because in my capacity as the president of that community association, I feel you haven't really listened or given us the opportunity to speak. The fact that you haven't heard a lot of people, that you saw people marching out month after month when you said, if you, if you speak now, you can never speak again on this topic, is a problem. That may work if you have a one or two-month delay, but like I said, the last time I got to speak publicly on this topic without fear of having everything changed to make my points move was December 1, nine months ago. And I really think that if you focus on the process that you've got, you need to correct it so that this kind of thing doesn't continue to happen because you're not serving our community well if you're not getting the feedback from the, the people who are living closest to the developments. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. That's the last speaker card that I have, and so I'll close the public hearing. I wonder if we could ask about the, the minutes for that December meeting of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Reglada, I'm online right now. The minutes for the Planning Commission meeting are in fact online. There's 673 pages of them.
Yes, sir.
I, I will, I will tell you, from personal experience, they're hard to find. It's not very friendly because I've gone back to look for previous minutes, and you have to know how to tweak the system.
Yeah, I, I have to also, in fairness, I find our particular agenda meeting, it's very difficult, and I've also been told that by school, I've told the county administrator, I think our, our website needs work. So I, I, even though they're probably on there, I'm sure it's very difficult to find. So I think that's something we do need to look at in the future.
But also in fairness to some of us up here.
We, we have-
We watched the Planning Commission meeting, so I'm very well aware of what they said. But thank you.
Yeah, and we, that, well, and the meetings were included in our packet.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can, you want questions or?
Yes, please.
Okay. I, I wanted to talk to staff, I guess. Who's, who's coming? I, I did hear, I heard Mr. Hertzler, I've heard the concerns regarding News Road. I believe in a conversation, though, that I've had with, I, I don't believe I've had that conversation with you, but I believe I had the conversation with Mr. Purse that right now, News Road can still, is still designed to take additional traffic at this time.
I can, I'm sorry.
Maybe they can have a different, maybe we could have offline.
I can speak to the-
That'd be great.
Sure. So the applicant did submit an updated traffic study that took information from the original traffic study in 2008, as well as the Ford's Colony traffic study that was done in the last two years and did trip generation, and that informed the proffers that were submitted. So there's not a concern from staff that the traffic generated by this use would negatively impact News Road.
And if we didn't approve this and the, what has already been approved in the master plan were allowed to come in, would, would that require anything different with traffic or would that also, would that, no. Sorry, I'm trying to read all the body, there's a lot of body language going on.
It's all good, and just to supplement Mr. Weisong's statement, you know, News Road does feel like a very different road from some of the other two-lane roads in the county. It's very windy, it's very hilly, there are not streetlights, there are trees up close to the road, but really from a traffic analysis point of view, the segment of News Road, kind of in the middle, with this proposal and with all of the other existing traffic and with future anticipated traffic, does not trigger the need as far as VDOT is concerned to add additional lanes to News Road. Now, again, separating out this portion of News Road, not to be confused with the Monticello Avenue intersection, which is very different, and of course, we've had some pretty good improvements here recently installed at the intersection of Centerville Road and News Road with two additional turn lanes and the signal, which has really helped capacity issues there. But from a numbers point of view, in terms of the amount of total traffic, a two-lane road, as far as VDOT is concerned, is sufficient. The applicant has proffered to do the analyses as it pertains to turn lanes and signals to ensure that those turning movements remain at an acceptable level of service, and all of that traffic data and the proffers' master plan have been reviewed by VDOT, and the proposal as it sits before you today therefore does pass the board's policy for adequate public facilities for roads.
Okay. I guess I would ask then a question of Mr. Getty. You've heard the concerns regarding, and I realize traffic improvements are expensive.
Right.
But you've heard the concerns. You also are talking about an older population that's going, and I'm, I could very well move in as soon as they're built, so I'm talking about myself as well. I, I would hope that there would be some listening to the residents if they're not feeling safe, that, I mean, I realize that you're, you're counting on a, a traffic analysis, but if you're getting feedback from people that are saying, we would like a turn, turn lane, you're going to be open to, to doing, to listening to the residents that would, would be moving there and living there.
I mean, safety is important to us, that's part of the marketing of the project, that it's a safe environment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Getty, before you sit down, if I may, do you, with it being the type of facility that it is, do you have any sense of how many people would actually be driving? I'm, I'm just here to tell you, if I live there, I won't be driving anywhere.
I don't off the top of my head, but I do know the traffic study took account of the various housing types. So, for example, the assisted living or memory care, probably no drivers or very few drivers. So I think that's baked into the traffic work that's been done.
So that's already figured out?
Yeah.
All right, so, and maybe you already asked this, I just, I'm, I'm kind of thinking about the traffic as well. So based on the, the original master plan from 15 years ago.
Right.
Compared to this one.
Right.
How does the traffic plan, just nuts and bolts, how's it, how's, is this one better than that one or?
I can summarize it this way.
Other than just the reduction in units?
It's the same traffic improvements in, in either plan, and this plan has 900 fewer trips a day on the road.
The current, the one that you're presenting?
So it's the same improvement with significantly less traffic.
900 fewer, 900 fewer trips per day? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Getty, before you sit down, don't rush away.
Would you like a chair?
I'm just curious how you describe the, you know, I'm having a hard, hard time reconciling the idea that, that this is a CCRC.
Right.
As opposed to an age 55 and up senior residential community and an apartment complex that has a significant amount of assisted living as part of it.
Well, I think it's what I described in that if I'm living in one of the independent homes, I can call the Morgan and say, I'd like to subscribe for your lending service, I'd like me, my meals delivered, just as if it was under common ownership.
Uh-huh. That's the main kind of-
Yeah.
I guess, you know, so, so again, what, what I'm thinking of is, as I understand it, when you look at Williamsburg Landing, we're looking at an age profile of folks who move into the community that's fairly senior.
Right.
If we're thinking about colonial heritage, I'm not so sure that's as true. I think there's probably a younger component to that, older population, if you will. And I would, I would anticipate that there is actually more single-family occupancy-producing automobile traffic coming through as opposed to, you know, people riding buses and stuff.
Right, and that is also baked into the study. I mean, there's no difference in the trip generation for these single-family homes than any other home.
Right, and, and is it the case that when, when you describe this, the CCRC aspect of this, that somebody who lives in one of the 55-plus, single-family home or townhouse areas gets priority if there is a waiting list?
If there is, I mean, if there's not a waiting list, they can go right in.
Then it doesn't really matter, right?
If there is a waiting list, the residents there go to the top of the list.
But they're still on the waiting list, they, they-
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to kick somebody out to make room.
Right, right, yeah, okay, thanks. Any other questions, any, any conversation, any discussion?
Add one more for staff. And, Mr. Weisong, you can, I don't know whether you, you know this or whether, Mr. Holt, but memory serves me correctly, in the intervening time since this original proposal was done in 2008, it sat for quite a while, but in the recent years, there have been several companies and proposals that have come forward, because I know that I've been called several times and briefed about possibilities, and then it, it fell away and somebody didn't do it. But I think we've been through two or three iterations prior to this one since 2008. Is that a, a fair assessment? Is that, or you think my memory is, is incorrect?
I don't believe we've received any legislative cases or proposed amendments. There may have been phone calls or things like that.
It was, well, I don't think it was ever filed. I think they were basically conceptual plans. Is that where somebody had come, come forward and, and, because I remember, I, we, I got called in one time, sat in your office and, and talked to a, a potential developer about picking up this as a CCRC before, well before this came along.
None immediately come to mind, they're just not fresh in my memory. Of course, this one has been in the queue for, it was probably in the queue for a couple of years before it bubbled up to the legislative process. The pandemic, of course, affected all the schedules a lot for everything, and so this one's been in the queue for a while. I just do not recall if there were any prior.
Okay, thank you.
Know that, like Jim says, I, I'd met with one or two that basically were looking at how much they could jam into the neighborhood to get it in there. And it was more of a, you know, how, how much bang can I get out of the buck? After talking with the applicant, Mr. Getty and Mr. Hall and a few others about this planned community, you know, we're left on this board with a plan of what can happen today. Whether it happens or not, that's a flip of a coin, but the way things are going, what's on the books right now can happen. Well, the applicants have come back and said, we want to try to work with you, we want to build a better community, we want to build a better product than the others I had talked to prior to this, and they weren't sitting there going, well, we're going to jam as many as we can possibly jam on this piece of land. And, and thank you. You know, is it going to put more traffic on News Road? Definitely. What done? Is it in the PSA where we say we want everything to go? Yeah, it is. I mean, that's why we have the PSA. Do I want to see a load of houses everywhere? No, I really don't. But do I want to see quality development, what we've always been known for in James City County? I mean, as a contractor and a builder, everything I heard in 34 years of business was, we build quality stuff in James City County. We always have been known for that. Look at our, what we have out there right now and what's talked about today. If we've got a chance to build less and have less on the land and less environmental impact and have things planned in a better way than what I've seen up to this point, I think we ought to look at it very hard and look at it very close because that's the development we want within the PSA, and that's the quality we're asking for in a PSA. So, you know, other than it's going to bring more traffic on News Road, which I understand, and it seems like it's more traffic everywhere anymore. And, and VDOT never has enough money to widen our roads, because Paul and I can tell you, we work very hard in James City County to widen every road we can widen, but we're so limited on funds. Pluses, there's, you know, there, there's, there's not going to be as many drivers coming out of there, which is a good thing. There's no schoolchildren coming out of here. So that's a savings on our school system as we're always trying to figure out how we can squeeze a little more into a school system, add three, five, 20 more kids in a classroom to try to save money and be careful of what we're spending, and we, you know, we just, we just had a long discussion with the school board on money that we're going to have to come up with to spend to, to do some more stuff in the schools. So that's a constant, and which is a good thing because we want our children educated and we want our children safe. Less than, I think it was 900 trips a day, that's, that's a lot compared to what we could have. You know, 900 more trips a day on News Road compared to what we're going to have is a lot better. The drivers are older and, as all of us up here are experiencing, the same thing some of you out there are experiencing, you know, we're getting older every day and, you know, it's tough to find some of these facilities. I've gotten a lot of calls from people in Ford's Colony that have said we would love to move over there but keep our Ford's Colony connection and keep our friends and all that. And I think that's the biggest thing that we're seeing with people moving, especially people moving our area. We have programs, and the chief can tell you, we have programs right now that people have moved here to retire and their families are in other states, and they have no connection with anyone in our area that we're finding that we were, we were kind of losing them in the whole realm of things and, and thanks to the chief and, and putting stuff together and all that. As far as catching that from EMS, seeing what was going on, we've got a safety net under some of those people now that wasn't there before. So this with having people possibly moving from Ford's Colony into this facility is once again another safety net. I, I guess I'll leave it to the other board members to speak a little bit, but I'm in, I'm in favor of this project and, and plan on, you know, making a motion for approval. But I'll wait for the chairman to let me know when he's ready. Thanks, sir.
Sue.
Now, I would just like to make sure that everyone is aware that we do get the Planning Commission meeting minutes in our packets. We've read those thoroughly. I personally watch them on TV. I pop a lot of popcorn and sit back and relax. So we do follow that, we do vet everything very carefully. We read everything very thoroughly because we take a lot of responsibility in the decisions that we make. So we have, in fact, we've read our emails, don't always get a chance to respond because we get a lot. But we do hear from the citizens and we value everyone's input. My biggest concern with the original master plan is the extra amount of trips that it would generate and also the concern as- as to the quality of, without being rude, the quality of a generic developer coming in. And then we get a lot of phone calls about that, because I have in from, I have from other areas with that type of development coming in. I also, I'm concerned about, with the original plan, the fewer stormwater improvements that would be there. And I think that this group seems like you've heard the request of this board to go back to the drawing board and look for a reduced amount of units, you know, reduce the density. And I appreciate the fact that you heard us and took that to heart. But I think, I don't know, and just to confirm, the original master plan is still valid, correct? So anybody could come in and take it from the original get-go. All right. I just wanted to make sure. All right. I think that's, that's all I can think of for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to staff. This has been going on for quite some time. I appreciate all the work. I want to say thank you to Mr. Eisenhower. I think we may be on different sides this evening of this issue, but he's worked very hard to do his best to get a quality product. And he's very much taken his, his district into consideration. For me, it's about the fact that it's in the PSA. If I, I don't believe that you take a chance that somebody else would come in, that may, that may not ever come in, because I just don't think that's going to happen. This is a growing area. So I think that you, you have a quality opportunity here. And so you take, you take that, because there is a reduction. And Vernon, you've done yeoman's work as well, just in phone calls that you've had to make. So thank you for that. And I also, I reached out to a colleague of mine in Norfolk, and I must say she had nothing but outstanding things to say about the developers of this project and the work that you've done in Norfolk, which I appreciated hearing that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
First of all, I'd like to start out and say thank you to Mr. Ginsman and Mr. Getty for being so responsive. I know, right up until this morning, we were doing emails back and forth and dealing with proffers and stuff. But I feel it's very, very important because regardless of whether this is approved or not tonight, if it is approved, we want to make sure that we have the best possible product that meets the requirements of our citizens. And Mr. Hall, I'd like to tell you that, you know, I'm going to come here. I moved here from the Lower Peninsula in 1995, but my ancestors came to Jamestown in 1622, so I'm competitive. But I want to start out by saying a little bit about growth, because growth is an issue, and I want to talk about a quote I came across attributed to a gentleman named Mr. Edward Abbey. No idea who he is, but it was a real good interesting quote for me. Growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of the cancer cell. And for too long, we've had a problem sometimes in James City County with growth being sort of a cancer. And we've really worked hard, as we have indicated as a board, to try to make sure that the growth that does occur is proper growth that meets the needs and requirements of our citizens. Because remember, ultimately, the people who pay the bills for that growth are our constituents, the taxpayers. It's not free money. It comes from the taxpayers. A little bit of history. Mr. McGlynn and I were the two members on the board back in 2008 that voted against this original project. I'll tell you that we went through the same iteration, because it started out at over 1,000 units, and we got them down over a period of six, eight months or so to 741. I still didn't vote for it at 741, but we tried to decrease the impact. And the question was, why did that happen? Because at that time, it was an R8 piece of property inside the PSA, and the comp plan said exactly what it says today, low-density residential. And the developer who was going to try to develop it was the builder of Ford's Colony. And they wanted to make it part of the master plan of Ford's Colony. But it was also very clear at that time, and by the way, at that time, our homeowners association of Ford's Colony was not independent. It was under developer control. And the developer said, we're going to put this into your master plan, but it's not going to be part of your community. And that was by mutual agreement. The people in Ford's Colony did not want this part of, being part of their homeowners association. They, they didn't have any choice about it being part of the master plan, because the developer had control of that. And so the question I asked was, why did they want to make it R4, part of a master plan of a community that it was not going to be part of? And the answer is because you could put more density on a piece of property and wash that density across 3,000 acres of Ford's Colony and say, look, the impact is not bad. It's all low-density residential. This piece of property is about 180 acres, about half of it's developable. It's got a lot of wetlands, it's got a lot of steep slopes. So what they did was they decided they wanted to try to get the density on this piece of property. And I referred to it then, and I still refer to it now, the existing approval, as a density grab that overdeveloped a parcel that should have been remained, low-density residential. Ultimately, they achieved about five times the density that they would have if it was part of the, truly part of the rest of the master plan of the community I live in. Let me address the threat of by right development. It was done in 2008. It's there. The developer went bankrupt. It could be picked up by anybody else who wanted to build it. It's sat there since 2008. And the answer, I come ask, when people ask, well, why didn't somebody pick it up? It's because it's not economically viable. It was a gross overreach. It was not what was even appropriate for the community. I worry about that threat of by right being maybe taken one way. I could say, you know, well, we're going from horrible to less horrible, as opposed to maybe horrible to optimal. The question becomes is, what do you think the optimum for this piece of property really should have been? And are we going to be tied by a previous decision that I think was a very bad decision? I mean, if somebody wants to come in and build it, they can do it. I don't have a concern that anybody's going to do that, because these people have very diligently come in here and looked at that and said, no, that stinks. We don't want to do that. We want to do something different. Now, have we gotten to where we want to be yet? Some of us will think so. Some of us may think not. Ultimately, our decisions on this should be made based upon the land use designation, that, you know, on the merits of the case, and not on the threats or potential threats. So let me go back to the comp plan. Comp plan still calls for what it did back in 2008, low-density residential. Low-density residential is one unit to four units per acre, depending upon the benefit provided. Basically, a developer comes along and says, I want to do low-density residential. And I say, great, we'll start at one unit an acre. You want more? You show me how it benefits the citizens of James City County, and I'll give you more density when you can show a benefit to the taxpayers. That's the way we should, should be doing business. There was a request to change this in the last comp plan, just last year, back to moderate-density residential. The board decided we were going to leave it low-density residential. So when you go to look at a land use case, even though there's already a zoning on it, whatever the zoning is, the first thing I do is I go back and look at that comp plan, and I look at it and say, what is the comp plan called for? And it says, low-density residential. That's where we should start. Now, density, that's always been the big issue, as we know, we're going to be dealing with that again as we go further along. What I didn't realize is about 35% of this county is undevelopable due to wetlands and steep slopes. You see it. You see it in your communities. You see it in the lots that are not desirable, that are being built on right now. There's one right down the street from me that's being built in a big gully. You know, how the person's going to do that, I don't know. I wouldn't build there. But that's what happens. So the density issue is, how did you calculate it? Ultimately, we started out with this parcel. It's about half, half of it's not developable. And if you take the currently approved approach, or let's just take the gross acreage, the gross acreage on it, 180 acres, 345 units, that's almost two units per acre. Okay? Fits in the range. What it doesn't count is it doesn't count the 125 units that are in institutional use. That, regardless of the fact that it takes up land and creates impervious cover, has zero impact according to the way our current ordinances are written. If we decided we wanted to look at how it is currently, we, we actually do give them some credit, not full credit, for the total of that undevelopable land, 15% in this case. So that 345 acres would be over 125, 345 units over 125 acres. Now you're getting up to 2.7, 2.78, I think they said, 2.8 roughly, just under three units per acre. Again, that doesn't count the institutional use. What we're going to be looking for in a new ordinance coming down the pike here is that we're going to say, we're going to only get count developable land. And if you count that, you're up to 4.2 units. Again, doesn't count the institutional. We still haven't changed that. So it depends on how you want to look at density. You know, you can make a case that, well, it's not all that dense. But when you take a look at what's actually there, the buildable portion of the property, and what's actually going on it, it's pretty intense. So the density is greater than I would like. Impervious cover, this is something that I want to make sure everybody understands pretty clearly, because this is another thing we've got coming down the pike that we've asked the county staff to look at, watershed plans. The watershed plan for this Palatton Creek dates back to 2001. Now, we have three different levels that we look at related to impervious cover, on how we designate these subwatersheds or the whole overall health of a watershed. And I'm going to give them to you very basically. The first is called sensitive, less than 10%, 0 to 10% of impervious cover in an area. You have stable channels, excellent habitat, good water quality. So the magic number for me is 10%. The next category is called impacted. You start at 10% and you go up to 25%. And what happens as you go to higher and higher levels of impervious cover, you're beginning to show clear signs of degradation due to urbanization. You have less viable watershed presence. It becomes basically more drainage. And then non-supporting is over 25%. That's where stormwater is basically a stormwater sewage conduit instead of a stream. So that's what we're dealing with. Back in 2001, we analyzed the 10 subwatersheds in Palatton Creek. Five of them were sensitive and five of them were impacted. And we said at build-out, they were all going to be impacted, but we weren't quite so bad yet. Eight years later, pardon me, seven years later, in 2008, we did an update. It was mentioned here about the Cold Spring Swamp Creek update. At that time, we did a new analysis of what had happened with development and what the impervious cover was. And now, instead of five and five, we were three sensitive, three sensitive and seven impacted. And they were projecting that at the build-out, eight would remain impacted and then two of them would become non-supporting. Big change, seven years. We haven't had an update for the last 14 years. What's happened in the last 14 years? In this particular watershed, that this portion is, it's part in the main stem and part in sub watershed 209. In 2001, it was 5.3% impervious cover, and at build-out, they were saying it wasn't going to be any worse than 12%. They recommended a cap of 9% on impervious cover for this particular sub watershed. That's what's in the original 2001 plan. The update in 2008 said, whoops, now we're going to be 16.4% at build-out. Of course, we were already at 16.4%, which is well above, 4% above what the previous build-out was. And they're now saying that build-out was going to be 21.9%. A little bit of a gross underestimation of what was going to occur in development. What's happened in the time period since then? You've had new development. Ford's Colony has built out a lot more. Windsor Mead has had a big addition. Founder's Village, right over behind Target, or the, you know, the PetSmart. When we built that, that piece of property alone is almost 33% impervious cover. And we know there's been a lot that's gone on. The question we have right now is, we don't know whether this whole watershed is already beyond redemption. And yet, we are still having to make land use decisions that could compound it even more. We don't have really good information to make that decision with. This proposal has about 14, 4% impervious cover. About half the site is in that sub watershed 209, and half of it's in the main stem. But the bulk of the developable area is in 209. So I would say that there's a pretty high amount of impervious cover that's going to go with this into that sub watershed. So we really don't know where we are. Traffic. There's a substantial increase in the weekday traffic volume. Now, this is a narrow, two-lane road. It's windy, hilly, trees. And I'd like my fellow board members to think about Green Springs Road or Jamestown Road. Some of them are the same. We don't have the ability to make major improvements to that. The only thing we can do is to try to limit what we put on it. And we've done that on Jamestown Road. We have said, we don't want to encourage any further development, because we know we can't do any additional widening to it. Baseline traffic, this adds about 1,900. It's down considerably from what it was before, but it's 1,900 trips, average weekday volume. When you add that to what currently exists, from Palatton Secondary up to the News Road, up to Monticello, it's going to increase traffic by about 22%. That means we're going to go from 85, 546 to 10,465. It's not a lot of traffic, not by standards of Monticello. But it isn't Monticello. It's a narrow, two-lane road. Down at the area where Firestone comes out, it's going to go from 6204 up to 8120, a 31% increase. So on a percentage basis, it's a significant increase in traffic on that road. Not going to be a deal breaker. It's going to make a lot of our constituents very uncomfortable and very unhappy. I do like the fact that the second entrance is potential to be, to be converted into a permanent entrance, whether they take a look at it. I know that the turn lane additions will help. I will tell you that the traffic lights are proffered, but in reality, every time we've dealt with a proffer, there are odds that I would give you. And the odds are that it will never meet warrants at the Firestone Gate. The main entrance in Firestone will never have a traffic light, because it won't meet VDOT warrants. That's my personal opinion. It may meet warrants over at the Palatton Secondary. And that's where it's really needed, because that's where the biggest impact is. It's not the folks in Ford's Colony coming out. It's the folks at Palatton Secondary trying to get across from one side of their community to the other side of their community, or making turns in and out. There are good lane improvements that are proffered that will be made there. Whether you get a traffic light or not, I don't know. I hope you do, because I think you need it. But there, although it's proffered, ultimately, it's up to VDOT. And there are no guarantees. Now, the other thing I'd like to, before I sum up, is I'd like to talk about, there was a piece of paper that we were given, I think by staff earlier, which listed all of the CCRCs. There are four, there are four major CCRCs in the community right now. You've got Williamsburg Landing, Patriots Colony, Windsor Mead, and Chambrill. Those are four that have continuous, continuing care. Three of them have the full continuity care. They do have skilled nursing. Chambrill does not have skilled nursing. We've approved them for skilled nursing, but I don't believe they've gotten the certificate of public need for it. There are some other places that are specialized. They either have skilled nursing, or they have independent living, or whatever. have independent living, or whatever. But I'm looking at those four big CCRCs. Right now, they have, those four CCRCs have 962 built units of independent living. They have 191 that we've approved that they haven't built yet. This one would add 345 more. The assisted living, or skilled nursing, which to me is the heart of what we really are looking for in that community. We currently, at the other facilities, have 502 built, 415 approved but not built, awaiting a certificate of public need, which they may or may not get. And then this one is 125, which I believe we fully understand, it's an uphill fight to get a certificate of public need. So I think there is a legitimate concern that with what we already have approved and unbuilt, there's already a saturation of this market in James City County. So let me sum up real quick then, and I'll get out of your hair. There are some good things that have occurred here. The pros, it reduces the size of a previously approved proposal. It adds a phasing proffer, something we didn't have to begin with, which ensures that the two halves of it get built in a logical manner, and not one and then the other, or one and never the other. It adds an HOA transition proffer, which is important to me, because I've seen so many of my communities where you have the developer control the HOA, and it's difficult for the community to make that transition. This is a very clear-cut transition, and I appreciate the developer's willingness to do that. It clarifies, proffers have clarified the age restriction, improved the traffic light and entrance proffers, and it doesn't generate schoolchildren. So those are the things that I see as the positives for it. Cons. It's not compatible, in my mind, with low-density residential land use called forth by the comp plan. It's still a little too intense. The proposed density is not compatible with the character of the surrounding communities. If you take a look at it, you're anywhere from 2.8 to on up, and over in most of the communities of Palatton Secondary and Ford's Colony, it's about 1.1. Using the same, as long as you use the same method of measuring. It's likely to have an adverse effect on the surrounding environment. Again, my concern here is the watershed management plans. It's supposed to be a tool that we use to control how we let development occur. And we're letting it develop occur without using that tool, or knowing what is necessary. This is part of a master plan that is completely unrelated and separate from the community that is, that is basically the master plan was built for. There is no real connection between Ford's Colony and this community, other than the fact that somebody decided they were gonna put it in that master plan. I've looked at it, and I said, it's not a true CCRC, it's a co-location of assisted living and high-end housing. And one of the things that I am really concerned about is that the price point for the housing is extremely high. Very high. I couldn't afford to move into that community. I've lived in Ford's Colony for 27 years. I would comment that if we don't have an unaffordable housing policy, this might help us get there. Substantial increase of 20 to 30% in weekday traffic volumes, and it creates the need for a greater workforce housing without providing any. The people who are going to staff this are people who need workforce housing. Now, let me go to the uncertainties, because that sort of extends into that. One of the things we have is we have a limited availability of medical staff and workforce. Most of the people who work in these facilities don't live in our community. They commute up from Newport News, or out from New Kent County. And I know that limited availability of personnel has been a factor, because there's one place in the city of Williamsburg that has actually had to transfer patients to Richmond, because they don't have the staff to manage the patient load they have in Williamsburg. The nursing beds are hard to come by, as I said. I'm concerned about the capability of the Homeowners Association to support the infrastructure in the community. If you've got one like Ford's Colony, which is huge, we have the ability, we have the, if you will, the revenue base, to be able to support private roads and things like that. It could be a strain on the Homeowners Association. And it doesn't necessarily meet the traffic warrants for our traffic lights. So, while I don't oppose the concept, I do oppose the scale of the development. And I have to ask myself, what exactly are we buying on behalf of our constituents? And how does this proposed development impact our average citizen? Personally, I believe that the drawbacks outweigh the advantages, so I will not support it tonight. But I do appreciate all the work everybody's put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenhour. So let me just start off by saying that we've had a lot of discussion about a lot of folks. I'll disclose that my family's roots in this country go all the way back to the 1930s and 40s. And, so I don't have that long lineage, but I can tell you that one of my early landladies was Sarah Warburton. And that the house that she rented to me, and I think I met her one time, so I must have paid my rent on time, was smaller than the smallest house in this proposed development. I like to think that she would have been interested in providing opportunities for people who were not making a great deal of money to find good housing. And from that perspective, I can also say, while I was living in that house, the Virginia Gazette decided to take advantage of a newly passed Freedom of Information Act law, and run the salaries of every public employee in the Williamsburg area in the newspaper. And my postman, as he came to deliver the mail the day that was published, said, "I had no idea you made so little." So, the ability to find affordable housing for people who are providing various kinds of services, not necessarily college professors, but other kinds of things, continues to bedevil us. And I think that it would have been important for a proposal of this kind to recognize that it is going to be dependent upon a group of residents who are probably not finding it easy to get a home in our community. And it's an issue that we need to always keep in the front of our minds. First of all, I'll go ahead and associate myself with many of Ms. Eisenhour's, almost everything Ms. Eisenhour had to say. And to recognize that I feel in an uncomfortable position here, because of the fact that having opposed the original proposal, I'm now being asked to help clean up the mess, if you will. I've heard that proposal described in very unflattering terms, and I think it deserved it. But when we, we are trying to figure out ways to address things, I think there's still more room to get a better proposal in this area. And so I'd say, you know, my sense of the likelihood of this property being developed under the existing master plan are pretty low. If it hasn't been developed in the last 14 years, hard to imagine that somebody would find it attractive to do that now. But I also wanna remind everybody that as we look at the very attractive proposal, in terms of the physical design of buildings and so forth, that there's no guarantee that those who are here today asking for this master plan amendment will ultimately be the ones to actually do this. We've seen situations in the past where, after a proposal has been approved, the developer has changed. And so, it's always important for us to remember that we're not approving the developer, we're approving, we're providing a kind of limit on what can and can't be done on a particular piece of property. And in this case, that is something that I just have to kind of keep in mind. I think these are very good developers, they are very well-regarded, but again, we don't know what the future's likely to hold in terms of this market. We know that certificate of public need was something that caused skilled nursing to drop out of this proposal. The fact that, you know, we are coming closer to the fulfillment of the baby boom's role in our local demographics is something to keep in mind as well. But ultimately, you know, to me, I think that we've heard pretty serious concerns about the traffic from residents. We have no answers to our need for additional housing for those who are likely to be necessary to keep this development running. And so, I'm gonna have to pass on this particular proposal and not support the application. I realize that it will be approved tonight, and that means that that proposal will be less damaging than had the other one been developed, but ultimately, I think we can still do better. So with that, Mr. Hippel, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion for approval of Z210012 and MP210003, proffers and master plan amendment for the continuing care retirement facility at Ford's Colony, Ford's Village.
Can we have a motion on the floor? Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Oh.
Can I move on to the next? Would you like, anybody like to take a short recess? Keep going? Keep going? We'll move on to the next public hearing?
Chairman?
Yes.
Two minutes?
Okay. We'll take a short recess. Yeah. I'll move on to the next public hearing. Yes.
Two minutes?
Okay. We'll take a short recess. Okay. Call the board back into session. Our third public hearing tonight is SUP 220008, Williamsburg Crossing Greenwood Christian Academy Expansion. Mr. Reisinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Mark Thornblum of Greenwood Christian Academy has applied for a special use permit to allow the operation of a school at the Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center located at 5251 John Tyler Highway. The property is owned B1 General Business, is designated mixed use on the comprehensive plan land use map, and is located inside the primary service area. Greenwood Christian Academy has operated a school and child daycare center in the Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center since 2009, when both uses were permitted by right in the B1 District. The existing facility has a capacity of 150 students and is referred to as the main campus on the attached master plan. In 2012, the B1 District was amended and schools became a specially permitted use, at which time the school use became nonconforming. The applicant is requesting an SUP to expand the school by adding another facility in the shopping center referred to as the annex on the master plan. The annex will have a capacity of 75 students, bringing the total capacity of the school to 225 students. This application does not propose any changes to the building footprint of the shopping center. The applicant intends to have all student pickup and drop off traffic take place at the main campus facility. In addition, Greenwood Christian Academy offers before and after school programs, which spreads out some of that pickup and drop off traffic, so it's not all at once. Staff anticipates that the existing vehicular entrances and drive aisles in the shopping center will be adequate for the school use. Staff also anticipates that the existing parking lot will provide ample parking for the use. With the proposed conditions, the school will be permitted to operate in the main campus and annex facilities, bringing the use into conformance with the zoning ordinance. The conditions also limit the school to a total enrollment capacity of 225 students from kindergarten to eighth grade, and hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. At its August 3, 2022 regular meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this SUP to the board of supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the board of supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Thornblum is unable to attend tonight, but we do have representatives of Greenwood Christian Academy in attendance for your questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reisinger, and then Mr. Rogers, and then we'll ask your questions for staff, for the planning commission.
This particular one went through the planning commission with a lot of unanimous feelings about what we were seeing. I don't want to drag it out, a lot of these fine people were there. There was basically, there was public support with us, they spoke to us, they said impactful things. And really, what it boiled down to, I think for us, was that this, there was, as mentioned, there's no proposed changes to the building or the parking lot. It's actually a continued use of an existing space. At least, with some of our personal experiences, that space struggles from time to time. It's not necessarily the most coveted retail space in the county, and so we had some discussion about, oh, would it be better to have a tax-producing business, and that could help pay for roads and traffic lights, vice, maybe a nonprofit such as the school. But no one felt that way. We saw that there was really no disruption to the current other uses of the facility. The owner of the facility is in favor of the expansion and of the continued use, and so we unanimously agreed with the staff that this proposal was both compatible with the surrounding development, it's been in existence, there's really no change coming, and it was also consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. And therefore, we also recommend approval of this application to the board of supervisors. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anybody have any questions for staff or for Mr. Rogers?
I have a question for...
I have one. Was there any discussion at the planning commission meeting of the traffic issue with the drop off? I know, you know, some of our regular schools, that creates a problem. I know, coming down Long Hill Road by the middle school, the traffic winds out onto the road and everything. It seems to be a fairly small organization, and I don't think it would be necessarily that much of a problem. What has been the experience, and did you guys discuss that at all?
We did. And it checked out as you're sort of supposing, was that the numbers have been small enough that it has not posed a problem to the coexisting tenants or to the development itself, and that basically this was gonna increase the population at most 75 students, some of them, if I'm remembering correctly, are from the same family, meaning it's not 75 more cars. And so our, my recap of that understanding was traffic just really was not an issue.
Thank you. I had a question for staff. So, looking through the paperwork, and maybe I missed it, but the annex, can we pull up that map again? I made the assumption that the annex is over here...
So if you're seeing it now with this master plan, which will be conditioned with the application, the main campus being that existing facility, you may be familiar with the green awning and signage at this entrance here. The annex is these vacant units in this location right there.
You know what? I apologize. I had pulled up the location, but I had missed that slide. I apologize, because I was concerned it was all the way on the other side of the shopping center. So it's going to be in between some of the retail space then. But I read where an adult is going to be accompanying the students as they make that walk between the two.
Correct. That's what the applicant has confirmed, and they can certainly elaborate as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Could I just follow up on that a little bit? Because it is the one thing that I've kind of been wondering about, well, a couple of things I'm wondering about with, just in terms of some numbers. You know, I think the proposal is fine, but I was curious as to how the children would be moving from the annex to the main building, which was apparently where the pickup is gonna take place. And I'm just wondering that, I'm assuming that the entrance and exit will be facing the, facing toward John Tyler Highway?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So the kids will be coming out there, and then under the structural canopy that exists all the way around there?
Correct. So that canopy covers about 10 feet in some places, and some places it's a little more about 15 feet wide. There's also an additional landscaped area in front of that, between that covered area and that drive aisle. So there's about a 10-foot separation between that, where the students may be walking, and that vehicular traffic is occurring now.
Okay. Because my real concern there was that in very bad weather, you know, that if they were coming out from perhaps the back end, which is like an alleyway, I think, right? More than anything else, delivery trucks and so forth, that they wouldn't be sheltered from the elements, and maybe even in the traffic, but it is gonna come out this way.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And I wonder, I don't know whether you can answer for Mr. Reisinger, or whether I'd be better off asking the applicants about the expectation of the number of kids who will be dropped off early or late versus during the school starting times.
I would defer that one to the applicant.
And then, can I, can you show us what the, what's the drop off and, what's the vehicular, what's the pattern like for pickup and drop off?
The applicant may be able to expand a bit more on this, but from what was submitted to staff, my understanding is that they use a drop off loop with this entrance here, and it is something that is, some point it turns around, and it's something that their staff is actively coordinating, having that traffic move through.
I don't know how you could turn around, right, where you took your little pointer to, because that's a, that's a kind, that's a narrow...
You have to go further down. You go further down the loop.
And then you make where the circle is?
Yep.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Yeah, you loop down further.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking from experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. If not, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And I understand that we have a couple of folks here representing the school who were not really planning to make any statements, but were available for questions. Is that correct? Great. So, whether Samantha Welch, Welch, or Tara Sagman, could answer maybe just a couple of questions about this?
Good evening. I'm Samantha Welch. I'm the principal at Greenwood Christian, and this is Tara Sagman. She's a business administrator.
Great. Thank you very much for coming up. Could you just address a couple of questions? I had that one question about if you have a sense of the distribution of kids over in time, in terms of how many you expect to be there for early or late programs versus the regular school day?
Okay. Well, with the annex and the children that will be there, they're the older students that do not tend to come in for early or late drop off. We see more of that with our preschool and younger students. So we don't anticipate any more traffic or movement in that, with that situation.
And you do have a half-day program for kindergarten, is it, or for preschool, rather, preschool?
Mm-hmm.
So it does suggest that there are differing, you're sort of staggering out the...
Exactly. There are some that are part half-day preschool as well as full day.
Okay. Because that reassures me a little bit more, so you don't have everybody coming at the same time.
Exactly, yes.
Right? Thank you.
I can assure you, it's a well-oiled machine.
They've got it down pat.
As a veteran of a car line, I know exactly what you're talking about. Ruth, did you have a question?
I think that you explained the way you're, you come in, they circle?
Yes.
Come back, and you'll continue that with, even with the addition?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much for your...
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask the board...
I'd like to make the motion to approve, please.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Rogers, call the roll.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we'll now move on to our next public hearing, which is SUP 220011, 3004 Ironbound Road Tourist Home. Ms. Condon. Ms. Condon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Randy Coleman has applied for a special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of his two-bedroom, single-family home at 3004 Ironbound Road. The property is zoned R8 Rural Residential, is designated low-density residential on the comprehensive plan land use map, and is located within the primary service area. This special use permit, if granted, would allow for short-term rentals throughout the year. There are no changes to the footprint of the home proposed. Staff finds some favorable factors for this application, such as the presence of adequate off-street parking, and that the applicant will obtain the proper licensing and inspections. However, the proposal does not meet the recommendations regarding locations for short-term rentals in the 2045 comprehensive plan. Staff finds the proposal incompatible with surrounding zoning and development, and not consistent with the recommendations of the adopted 2045 comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. At the August 3 regular meeting, the planning commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the SUP to the board of supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. Should the board approve this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Condon. Any report from the planning commission, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you. So on this one, we did argue amongst ourselves a little bit, but it really came down to two issues, I think. The one was, we agree with staff that it does not technically meet all of the recommendations regarding locations for short-term rentals in the 2045 comprehensive plan. And it was also noted that the owner was not going to be able to live in this house while it was rented. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath house. Be very crowded to live in there and rent it out while you were there. But we circled around on that and basically came back with a couple other things to point out. One is, the owner owns the nursery, which is a commercial business that directly adjoins the property. The nursery's open seven days a week, right? And so there's a presence at the property, at least, at least in like the 8:00 AM to probably 6:00 PM, and often later PM, because he's running his nursery business there. So this idea that the owner was not in the house, we didn't see as something that should necessarily stop this application. We also learned that night, because people came, much like for the school, there were people there in support of Mr. Coleman's application, including the people who lived across the street in Catty Corner, and they live in short-term rentals. I believe I'm captioning this absolutely correct, and those short-term rentals do not have owners inside them. So, at the end of the day, it was basically the members' opinions, all but one, that this particular unit situated as such... Oh, I'm sorry, I left off the most, probably the most important and longest part of the argument, which was, if you take this two-bedroom, one-bath house and you turn it into a rental, are you now further depleting the county's stock of starter homes and affordable workforce housing? And that was a very important discussion. But because of where this one is located, meaning it's on Ironbound Road, it's already next to commercial property, and it's surrounded by similar short-term rentals, it was felt, at least by six of us, that the property was not really competing for the low-cost housing of the county. And for those reasons, six voted in favor that this application should get favorable consideration by you, the board. And can I answer any questions, if there are some?
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Rogers. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Rogers? I have one question for staff or Mr. Rogers about this notion. I think there's a lot to recommend in terms of this proposal. One of the things that helps to recommend it is that it is in the middle of the business. We considered another tourist home not long ago, that because it was essentially adjacent to the airport and was seeing that as a clientele for that short-term rental location, but there was somebody who was more or less always available to respond to anything that might happen there. In this case, we have the notion that the next door is an employee of the nursery, as I understand it, who could be responsible to respond if there was a need. But I guess I'm wondering, what happens if that person is no longer in that, in that house? Is there some kind of commitment, that there would be some local nearby response, responsible party who could come and address any concerns?
I'll defer that one to the applicant, just so they'll know more about what they're doing. But then I'll also say that the parcel for the short-term rental is a separate parcel from the commercial nursery as well.
So I'll wait until we see if anybody else has any questions for staff. No? Okay. All right. So let me go ahead and open the public hearing, and we don't have any cards for that, but so I'll close the public hearing. But then I would like to ask the applicant if you could just comment about the question of responsibility for the rental during times when the nursery is not operating.
I have not addressed that, other than I do have staff that lives right there, adjacent to the property, that would be available for a short response if need be. Other than that, I could respond to the location.
And how far away are you, Mr. Coleman, from...
20 minutes.
20 minutes. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
But you have someone that is gonna live adjacent, so that...
I do have staff that lives...
If they were...
On Hickory Sump.
If there was an immediately.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Discussion or motion?
I've got a little discussion. I know that we deal with it, and the planning commission deals with it, and I know it firsthand. And we're always like, we need somebody to live in there, or live next to it, or whatever. But if we go to Nag's Head and rent a cottage, we don't have somebody living in the Daggon Cottage. I just don't understand what the, why we're so hung up on someone living there, or something being connected to it, because it's gonna, if there's an issue, it's gonna go to the rental thing first. It's not gonna be somebody coming out looking for somebody on the lot that's gonna go, hey, come here, I got a toilet that's clogged up, I don't know what to do. They're gonna call the company up and saying, there's an issue, how do we solve it? And then the company's gonna send it to the owner, and then the owner's gonna have to figure out, okay, who do I have staff wise that's doing it, or am I just doing it myself? And so, you know, we get, and I've noticed, I've read it in the paper, New Bernoulli's Hampton is getting in the same wheelhouse of, somebody needs to live there. And I think New Bernoulli's even got a policy that somebody is gonna live in the house. Well, I don't want Uncle Fred living in a house that I'm gonna rent out. I don't know who the heck he is. And, I mean, you know, he might be a freak of some sort, and I wanna come stay in a house, and I've got this goon living in there with me. And so, you know, that kind of frustrates me a little bit, because we don't do it in, or they don't do it in Nag's Head, and we've rented cottages down there, whole houses. Pretty well okay. I mean, you know, and I do it in my Airbnb, and rent that out, and nobody, I don't look, I would be able to rent it out if somebody said, somebody's living in there with me? I'm bringing my family? Who is this character? And I don't think I'd ever be able to rent it out, because they wanna be in a safe environment, by themselves, and I talked to somebody the other day that was talking about that, and even when they go to Airbnbs, they always check to make sure there's no monitoring devices in there. You know, so I know if Uncle Fred's in the back corner, they're definitely gonna have an issue. I will support the thing, and if we need a, if we'd like to have a motion, if there's any other discussion.
I'll support as long as Uncle Fred ain't there.
That's right. All right. I have a motion for approval of SUP, oh, was you have...
Yeah, I just had one. That's okay, because I'm one of those freaks that's been talking about the people living there.
No, I mean...
Aside from goons and Uncle Fred.
Uncle Fred likes you.
Because I'm, it's just, you know, for me, it's probably the larger discussion that I worry about Airbnbs, because they're not, you know, when you have hotels, they undergo safety inspections, they make sure there's working fire detectors, there's safety concerns that I have.
Yep. And we do that.
And so, you know, I think there's a whole... And so, you know, I think there's a whole, there's just a whole different layer, I think, to Airbnbs, and I don't have one, like that you do. I'm glad, no, you're not a goon, it's your Airbnb.
We can check and make sure.
Yeah. So, I do have concern, I do, that there's someone near, that's on this piece of property. Also, this is an area that has, there is one, I believe, across the street, and right next, you know, maybe even across from it. So, there are several in this area, so realizing that it's not in a neighborhood, so to speak, though, you know, I don't wanna discount the, I'm sure the people that feel, that live in this area feel very much as in a neighbor, but we've not heard anything against it that I'm aware of. So, you know, I just, I wanna, because I've talked about in the past, about the importance to me, about, you know, people being on-site, maybe, because of the things I mentioned. So, I just wanted to, but go ahead with your motion.
And I think connecting onto that, too, is when we have somebody coming before us to say, I wanna do this, and we're taxing them, I get taxed out the craziness with it, but the bed tax and the transient tax and all that, and it's not in, by the end of the month, you get this, you got 10% on that. And so, you know, all the people that come in front of us that say, I wanna do an Airbnb, does it fit and all that, I applaud them, because they're doing it right. There's a ton in our community, a ton.
I was just gonna mention that.
And the county came out and inspected mine, and checked smoke detectors and everything else, and that may be something we put in place as a permanent thing. I asked them to come out, look at everything, they checked everything over and all that, and really, by rental, you're supposed to get fire, or any of your fire alarms and all that tested once a year. I do with all my rental stuff, and they test everything once a year and certify it. That's, and just like the hotels have to do. And that's where we need to look, as far as legalizing all the ones that are out there that are, you know, that's a tax you're not getting.
I agree 100%.
And I don't mind paying my fair share of tax, I don't like to pay a lot of them, but I pay them, and I don't mind paying them. But if I'm paying them, and somebody else has got an Airbnb down the road that has not come through this process, they're collecting all that, we're collecting nothing.
Yes, sir.
And if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. So, I applaud everybody that comes in front of us and asks, hey, and some of them won't pass, I mean, it just won't fit in the neighborhood. And I agree with that, but, you know, the living on-site, I'm just, so I'll make a motion for SUP 20...
So, just before you, before you make your motion, I would just remind you that we're not asking about, in this case, somebody living in the home. We're asking, is there gonna be somebody close by that can respond in the case? You know, we're in a community where lots of folks don't know the distinctions that Virginia makes about local government. And I can imagine somebody saying, basically, you know, oh, I've got a problem here, I gotta call the police, Williamsburg Police. You know, they'll sort it out quickly, but still, you know, just to be able to have somebody that you know can help you navigate through a problem that you're having with the house, you know, water main breaks, something like that, just to figure out who to call, how to address it, what to do about it, is what we're sort of looking at. I think we're all struggling with how exactly to deal with this. We've got hospitality industry that is very important to our local economy, and short-term rentals are very much in competition with that. We have neighbors who have invested heavily, their most significant financial investment is gonna be their home, and so we wanna make sure that they feel confident and protected. We haven't looked at the question of whether, if a home has the ability, has a special use permit to generate income beyond just the residential use of that home, whether there should be a reassessment of the value of the home because of its income-producing potential. And, you know, so there are a lot of questions that are still out there, and I think we're still kind of navigating our way through it. In this particular instance, what we're saying is, you know, we just wanna get a sense that, you know, that this is not gonna be, as we had not too long ago, somebody from Florida buying up properties, turning them into this, you know, when you look at the, at property sales of homes in the United States, I don't know whether I mentioned this here or not before, but 20% of the home sales in the United States in the last couple of years have been institutional sales. Not people buying a house to live in and maybe renting out some rooms to help them with their mortgage payment, but companies coming in and buying up these homes that otherwise might be available to help address the housing problems that we're confronting right now all across the country. So, you know, I think that's really where we're struggling to figure out what to do. If, you know, I don't insist on your Uncle Fred being in that house, I wanna make sure that...
Okay.
Do you have a phone number posted if somebody has a problem?
No, you go right to Airbnb.
You go right to the site?
Yeah, you go, just like when you rent at Nag's Head, you go to the rental company and say, I got a problem. Same thing with that. I've got a problem. It's not that I gotta find a number for Michael or Uncle Fred, I got a number that I call the company up and say, hey, I've got it now. Lucky we haven't had, knock on wood, any type of issues of anything, but people enjoying themselves while they're out there. And mine is, is that it is a revenue-generating thing, and if you go on my website and look at it, you'll see, we've got everybody in the area as far as being a tourist destination. And you wouldn't believe how many bags of trash we get with boxes of empty shoes and everything else, that they're buying and shopping while they're here. So, we've got shopping, restaurants, beer tours, wine tours, bush gardens, water country, all of them rolling the thing. So, we advertise extensively, so that when people come here, they have a place to go. So, I am part of that forest and industry, and trying to promote that James City County. But I think it's just as fair for this as it is anything else. It'd be like saying, okay, I don't want any more contractors in James City County. I'm here, and I said, I don't want them. They're welcome to come in here as part of the way of business and doing life in the business world, in the private sector. That's my two, I'm, I'll be quiet now. Let's see, look for approval of SUP 22-0011-3004, Ironbound Road, Taurus Home.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion cares. Thank you all.
Thank you for that comment, really.
All right, we'll move on to our next. SUP 22-0009, James City County Police Firing Range Expansion. And Ms. Condon, back again. Thank you.
Hello again, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Rickell has applied for a special use permit on behalf of the James City County Police Department to expand the existing police firing range at 1206 Jolly Pond Road. The property is zoned PL, Public Lands, designated federal, state, and county land in the 2045 comprehensive plan and is located outside of the primary service area. The Jolly Pond Convenience Center and existing firing range are currently located on the property. The existing firing range is located towards the interior of the approximately 546-acre parcel and has been in use since 1985, when it was first approved by the county. The firing range is not open to the public. According to Virginia Code, Section 15.22232, unless a public structure is shown on the adopted comprehensive plan or other master plans for the county, the local Planning Commission and the governing body shall review to determine whether the location, character, and extent of the project is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to find this proposal consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan. At the July 6 regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the SUP to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant and representatives from the James City County Police Department are available as well. Thank you.
Anybody having questions for Ms. Condon?
It's time.
Mr. Rogers, you need to find out who assigned you tonight, right?
The new guy. He'll do it.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just hoping I can come to every meeting. On this one, the all-commission members agreed with the staff. We found the proposal compatible with all the surrounding development. It was consistent with what's already there. It seemed important to us that we would want our police officers to be able to train on a 100-yard range instead of only a 50-yard range. And there were two votes, both were unanimous. One was to recommend approval of the application, and one was to find the facility consistent with the comprehensive plan. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rogers?
I guess, looking at the picture, is the existing firing range from firing out toward the northwest on this, it looks like there are like one, two, three, four, four, five, six little lanes or whatever?
Southwest.
There you go. The road comes in and...
Yeah, so if the road comes down, it points down this way, so the targets are down at the bottom by the tree line.
At least, the little cross, the little crosshatches there are actually crossed. So, actually, the firing is out to the southwest, then?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's, and this, this will, this change will double the distance you have?
That is correct. It'll make it 100 yards.
Is that pretty much still within that open area, or are they gonna have to move some of those trees to do it?
They'll have to clear a few of the trees.
The reason I ask is, because it looks like you're going toward the narrowest part of the thing. I was curious, is the, is the layout...
Just to clarify one thing, the current range is set up for 25 yard.
Right.
So, we're expanding out to 100 yard to facilitate better weapons training for the police department. So, yeah, there will be some tree clearing going up to the northwest direction as part of the site development.
Is there a cursor or pointer? Okay, that's all right, then. That would just be so much easier.
Yeah. So, the tree clearing is out toward the northwest direction, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes more sense, because you've got more room out that way to...
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a grade there, it's actually, they'll be shooting downhill.
Okay.
So, that's another aspect there.
So, the topography and the space you have really give you a good opportunity to expand it.
Yes, exactly.
Perfect. Thank you.
The question I had is, in a perfect world, would you have an indoor shooting range, firing range, as opposed to an outdoor pavilion?
Well, I guess an indoor range might be preferable. Maybe someone from the police department would be willing to address that.
Indoor range, you're gonna, you're gonna have more... Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any questions on that side? No? Okay, thank you very much. And let me go ahead and open the public hearing. We have no cards for this one, so I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for...
I would move the motion.
Motion to approve of the...
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to get back to the SUP 22-0009, JCC Police Firing Range Expansion.
Do we need to do the, is only the Planning Commission that needed to do the certification? Do those as one item, or should we do them separately? Just adopt the resolution. Okay, so motion to adopt resolution is printed in the packet, right? Okay, Mr. Stevens, just call the roll, please.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Okay, we move now to item, to public hearing number six.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens, if you could see about getting a laser printer, a pointer, or something like that, when we have information up that we can point on...
Yes, ma'am. Oftentimes, the mouse has worked, but we'll make sure there's something you can see on screen, because a laser pointer, you wouldn't see in front of you.
Yeah.
We oughta have a device we can make that more obvious for you, so we'll work on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. So, we're now at public hearing, 2022 Agricultural and Forestal District, AFD Renewals. Terry Castella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There are currently 13 agricultural and forestal districts in the county, 12 of which are set to expire of October this year. As required by state code, the county must review all established AFDs prior to their expiration. During this review, districts must be continued, modified, or terminated. State code also provides that all AFD property owners have an opportunity to withdraw any or all of their property from the AFD during the renewal periods. The Croker District currently consists of 28 properties totaling approximately 1,314 acres. The Barnes Swamp District currently consists of 34 properties totaling approximately 1,929 acres. The Cranston Pond District currently consists of six properties totaling approximately 774 acres. The Christiansen's Corner District currently consists of seven properties totaling approximately 1,179 acres. The Yarmouth District currently consists of 13 properties totaling approximately 2,142 acres. The Gospel Spreading Church District currently consists of eight properties totaling approximately 1,133 acres. The Armstead District currently consists of four properties totaling approximately 311 acres. The Carter's Grove District currently consists of two properties totaling approximately 316 acres. The Pates Neck District currently consists of four properties totaling approximately 755 acres. For all of these districts, staff has not received any withdrawal requests. The Hill Pleasant Farm District currently consists of three properties totaling approximately 346 acres. Staff has received a request for a partial withdrawal of 42 acres from the district. The Gordon Creek District currently consists of 33 properties totaling approximately 3,055 acres. Staff has received a request for a withdrawal of 43.55 acres from the district. The Mill Creek District currently consists of 39 properties totaling approximately 3,276 acres. Staff has received a request for a partial withdrawal of approximately 144 acres from the district. At its July 21 meeting, the AFD Advisory Committee voted six to zero to recommend the continuation of the districts to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. At its August 3 meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the continuation of the districts to the Board of Supervisors. If continued, the districts are proposed to be reestablished for another four-year term with edits to condition number three that reflects updates from the Virginia State Code in clarifying language. Staff finds these districts to be compatible, the requirements of state code, and surrounding development, as well as consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff also recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the renewal of these AFDs for a period of four years, subject to the conditions included in the respective staff reports. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Castella? I don't have a question, but I wanted to just say thank you to you and the staff for this comprehensive report. I mean, it's really a lot of work to deal with, and I especially appreciated the survey that you did of the property owners to see what the conditions were under which they would consider withdrawal, or whether they were willing to extend and so forth. Very helpful information. Thank you. Hey, Ms. Rogers?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the commission members expressed agreement with the recommendation to approve the existing programs, such as they are. Our discussions really centered on, perhaps with the next cycle, that there would be even other programs that might be considered of use to these landowners, in particular, something called a carbon sequestration program. And there was a recommendation by a number of board members that in the next survey, that there's more done, I guess, to probe those sorts of programs, to see if they're viable. The discussions seemed to be suggesting that there really wasn't that much value, at least by some of the members, you know, they thought the county's getting a great deal with the program. There was also discussion about whether it should be more than four years, because four years is the perfect number. years is the perfect number, but it really circled back to the, the program such as it is. When we met, we were fortunate to have Mr. Bradshaw, Commissioner of the Revenue, come and address the commission to try to explain the different sorts of benefits that go to people with a lot of land that are willing to keep them in some sort of rural stewardship for all of us. And one of the things that he included was the idea that there's land use valuation programs outside of the AFD. But what he told us was the twenty-five percent of the parcels within the current AFD do not receive other land use valuation other than this program, meaning he saw it as an important program. So the motion was made, recommended to renew all twelve AFDs, and a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they consider including with the next survey at the next renewal cycle, carbon sequestration as a potential way to offset some of the costs of the program. Questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Rogers? Thanks for your yemen work today. Appreciate it. And I would just point out that, for instance, on the withdrawal from the Gordon Creek renewal, I believe that that was the Abbott's withdrawal, that the withdrawal is essentially because the, the property is also already in a conservation easement, and therefore, they're not really getting any benefit out of this, this particular program. Seems like an important piece of information to kind of have on hand as to whether or not we're actually losing people that have been in the AFDs to development, or whether they are finding other means for land conservation and protection. Okay. All right, any, so that brings us to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and we have one speaker, and that is Shaleah Chandler. Is that right? You, thank you. Thanks very much. Then in that case, I'll close the public hearing. And ask the board for your preferences. If you, if you want to, well, maybe I'll just go ahead and make the motion if you don't mind. I would move for the renewal of the following agricultural and forestal districts, AFD twenty-two zero zero two, Armstead twenty-two, twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero three, Barnes Swamp, two thousand twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero four, Carter's Grove, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two oh oh five, Christiansen Corner, Christiansen's Corner, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero six, Cranston's Pond, twenty twenty-two renewal. Item number six is AFD twenty-two zero zero seven, Croker, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero eight, Gordon's Creek, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero nine, Gospel Spreading Church, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero ten, Hill Pleasant Farm, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero eleven, Mill Creek, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero twelve, Pates Neck, twenty twenty-two renewal, AFD twenty-two zero zero thirteen, Yarmouth Creek, Yarmouth Island, twenty twenty-two renewal. So we've covered now all of those, and we can adopt them all in one motion. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Thank you very much. We now have finished with our public hearings. We'll move on to board consideration. We have one item before us tonight, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate, of real property at thirty-one seventy-five Ironbound Road. And Mr. Kinsman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What I've got before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute those documents necessary to purchase a roughly two-acre parcel of property adjacent to Clara Bird Baker Elementary School. Like I said, it's about two acres. It fronts on Ironbound Road. It's been the series of a number of zoning complaints over its time. It is a relatively flat parcel, and something that we're thinking could provide a good expansion area for the school, for any pre-K programs, or just in protection of the school vista and the area in front of Ironbound Road. Will also allow us to remove the house, which is being sold in as-is condition. Will abate the nuisance out there and, and make the view shed along that road a little bit better. So the resolution actually includes two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the property. And then I left in about fifty thousand for closing cost, removal of the house, remediation of the property if we need. Hopefully, we won't need that much, but it won't have to come back to you. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Kinsman?
No, I'd move the resolution authorizing the purchase of real property at thirty-one seventy-five Ironbound Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion cares.
All right, we'll move on to board requests and directives.
Been a long time since we've been here.
Sure.
I'll start if you guys don't mind. August was a off month, but I just kept busy. Second of August, I went to the Riverside Doctors Hospital. They had a groundbreaking for their new doctor's office out there. I was the only representative from the county, but it was a, it was a nice, nice ceremony, a little hot. On the eighteenth of August, I attended with Ruth over here, the VACO, yeah, whoever she is, the VACO Summit. While she stayed there for the whole thing, I just went up for the finance committee meeting, and I did pass a email along to the board about the status of that, and I'll give you an update as we get closer to the actual November meeting. And the twenty-seventh, I went to a VFW picnic that we had out at the Upper County Park. Peg Borman was Commander in Chief of Picnic, and it was very nice, nicely done. I really appreciated the invitation to be there for that one. Also, I ran into Peg again two days later on the twenty-ninth, with, when we did the Clean County Award, it was ARC with Ms. Sadler, so. And then between now and the next meeting, I'm going to be out of town again. I'm going to go out to Colorado for my fifty-fifth reunion.
All right, I'm going to be quick and short and to the point. I've talked enough tonight. One thing I did, we had a very busy, I had a very busy month for a month. We were off. I had more meetings, I think, last month than I, than I'll have this month. But one of the highlights was Bethel Restoration Temple, forty-one years, and for the temple, and, and they do such a wonderful job. I told them, next year, we need to, had a county administrator join us out there. And it's a very good event, and I normally serve with them, and, and we had dinner afterwards. It's, and you won't go home hungry. It's a great event and great time, and Bishop out there, he's Bishop Gray and Apostle Gray now, and does a wonderful job with the congregation, and, and we have a lot of fun. Off to you.
Thank you. I just had the Tourism Council Financial Meeting today. Just as a reminder, all of those records are open. You will find them on the website. If you have any trouble, please reach out to me, and we have our meeting next Tuesday. It is an open meeting, and it is at Busch Gardens. Last week, I went to volunteer for the Food Bank Elected Officials Day. We had a very large contingent from James City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg. We packed the backpack, which there are students in James City County who get the, the food that goes home with them on Fridays. But while we were there, the food bank did tell us that they are hurting for donations, not for the federal programs, but for the shelf, the food that people can come in and get. So if you have some canned foods, or if you, if you're so inclined to help, that is desperately needed. Attended the VACO Summit. August, I think the only difference was we didn't meet, but we were still very, very busy people. And then we had a joint meeting for the, with the schools and the city of Williamsburg regarding school safety. Earlier tonight, it did make, I made a little funny about the Queen, but I'm really kind of ashamed of myself because I think it's, one of the really cool things about living here is that I was able to take my daughters to see the Queen. And they, they were talking about that when, ninety-six years she served her country, and we were very fortunate that she, I think she came here twice. And we had, of course, she was at Jamestown, and actually, a friend of mine who, it's Trevor, Trevor Long that works here, his father made a box. He's a, he's a wood, woodworker, and he made a box that Jamestown used to present her a gift. The gift was put into the box. So she got to see a very talented crafts person, and so, you know, we forget, well, we don't, we don't forget, but I think sometimes we take for granted that we live in such a historical place and the opportunities that we get, and I'm very glad that was an opportunity that I was able to have. I just simply meant that Mr. Hertzler was doing well because he was up and walking around, that's all. No one misunderstand me.
We know.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I wasn't saying anything ugly.
You good?
Um, yes.
I did participate in the jail meeting along with Mr. Stevens recently, and as Mr. Eisenhour pointed out, we attended the Clean Business Award presentation for Noah's Ark, which my precious puppy, Jackson, they know him well there, he's a regular visitor. He has issues, as we're all aware. But anyway, that was, when they brought up, these are adorable, they said, you want little puppies for your photo? We're like, yay, everybody wants, weren't they the cutest? So they brought these little Frenchy puppies out, oh my God, I was just in love. So we had a great time visiting with all the puppies out there. And then, just, just an FYI, I don't know if anyone else is getting phone calls, but my phone's been blowing up lately, my personal phone, just with spammers and people trying to get your financial information, people telling me my Netflix account's going to be canceled unless I give them my bank account, and I don't even have them in Netflix. So that kind of was a clue, but I actually had somebody calling me, telling me my power was going to be cut off today, representing Dominion Power, and wanting my financial information. So just FYI to all, everybody out there.
That would listen to scam.
No, that was really, well, I, I actually went online, looked it up, and because my husband's freaking out, he says, I know I paid that bill. So, and sure enough, he, he had. But just FYI, everybody be careful out there because the phone calls are just, it's like you can't even answer your phone anymore. So, anyway, just wanted to...
Is it a very good reminder in this community where you have a vulnerable and an elderly population? And I know that my dad was scammed by a Dominion caller and also by someone that called, pretended to be his grandson in jail, and he even called him what the grandson called him, and it sounded very convincing. And luckily, because of my dad's situation, he couldn't get to his wallet, so he called me. It's like, you've got to call, they need my credit card. So it's, there are bad people out there.
My grandson warned, uh, you warned me, told me I was very vulnerable because I'm old.
Well, I wasn't talking about you, but, but it's just that people prey on the elderly, which is really...
They do.
Yeah.
So I guess they figure I'm in that category because my phone's just blowing up lately. Anyway, just, everybody be careful, beware.
Thank you. Thanks for that warning. You know, as I, as I drive across my, my district periodically, I occasionally notice a place that gets your attention, and there's a property out on Merrimack Trail at seventy-two fifty-nine Merrimack Trail that just really causes me to have some, some questions about the state of the, of the abandoned structures there. So I'd ask that staff for a, an upcoming meeting, come back and, and give us a report on whether there are any code violations on those properties at seventy-two fifty-nine Merrimack Trail, and any safety concerns that would be associated with the condition of those buildings. And then, once you've taken a look at that, those kinds of problems, get a sense of what it would take to bring them up to code and maybe figure out what the cost would be on, on those particular items. So if you could do that for an upcoming meeting, that would be very much appreciated. Great. I have a couple of, you know, it has been a long month, so I'll just quickly do these. Really had a very enjoyable experience at National Night Out on August second. A great opportunity to be with our police officers and very enthusiastic crowds of both young and older people at three different locations where I've, I joined up with the police department. It was, it was quite nice to do that throughout the Roberts District. We had a meeting about a week later in Grove dealing with the community park, and it was a very engaged audience, I would say. We had a lot of discussion, gave us a lot of things to think about, both relating to the, to the park and other issues in the community. And so we will be following up with that, with the results of that meeting, with another opportunity to get together with the community and hear their thoughts about some other issues and maybe give them some other options to consider. I appreciated the fact we didn't have meetings in, in August because I spent so much time working with the folks in Kings Point, addressing issues related to replacement of some of their cables, their, their Dominion Power cables. It was a really challenging environment where one, one afternoon, apparently there had been mismarking utility lines, and Cox Cable was, cables were cut. And then the next day, the Dominion main power line was, was cut, and at one point, a worker who had to work by hand happened to hit a, an active power line, causing a three-foot flare to go up in the air and melting his shovel. I just couldn't even believe that he...
Is he okay?
Yes, he appeared to be okay, declined treatment, seemed to be doing okay. But I think, you know, it might be useful for us to encourage some consideration by the General Assembly at some point of perhaps, or maybe the State Corporation Commission, taking a look at miss utility and whether it's serving our needs properly, how many mismarkings there are out there. I keep hearing of more and more instances where that's the case, or whether maybe it's not always their fault, but certainly there, there are disruptions that cause, come as a result of that. And maybe talk to our legislators about whether there's any opportunity to, to investigate that, because it really does, especially with people working from home nowadays, dependent on both their internet connections and their power, obviously. Wanted to report that we had communicated with the school board about pre-K facilities. They had indicated at a earlier meeting of the school board that they were okay with either of two options. One was construction of a new elementary school, and the other was to build some dedicated pre-K facilities. We encouraged them on the latter point to go ahead with planning for two or three pre-K facilities that would provide space for up to five hundred children in that, in that facility, and hopefully, we will now begin to see forward movement on the needed pre-K buildings. We also had a joint meeting with the schools and city council on school safety and security issues. It was a closed meeting, of course, given the sensitivity of the items being discussed, but I think it was an extremely productive meeting, very helpful for us to understand the issues that the schools are confronting, very reassuring to know that the, that the schools are doing a very good job with what they have already identified and are planning for improving in areas where they may, may see some deficiencies or opportunities to, to raise the bar a little bit more. And finally, I just want to draw people's attention to the fact that on September nineteenth, from six to eight PM at Laurel Lane Elementary School, and at noon on September twenty-first at, from noon to two PM at the Williamsburg Community Building at four twelve North Boundary Street in the city, VDOT will be briefing the public on the, on project pipeline, which addresses traffic congestion issues at Route one ninety-nine and Brookwood, Jamestown Road, John Tyler Highway, and where John Tyler Highway and Strawberry Plains Road come together. They will be providing, showing some options and suggesting their staff preferences, but most importantly, there's an opportunity for the citizens to comment on the proposals that they are considering and perhaps propose alternatives as well. So with that, I'll, I'll finally... So with that, I'll finally... With that, I'll turn it to Mr. Stevens for the report of the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, two items I'd like to share this evening. First is really just to say thank you for your approval of the Public Safety Personnel Salary Incentive Adjustment. Chief Ash, Chief Peterson, Brad Ryanheimer, and I have had a lot of conversations about what we think will make a difference. What you've approved tonight is almost one... Well, it's $1.2 million additional salary and benefits cost annually to the county, so it is significant. Is it enough? We'll see. You know, one of those things, we need to put it in, and we'll evaluate in a few months, and we'll keep you up to date with staffing and how we're doing, and if there are changes to be made, we'll come back. And I will tell you, I appreciate it. This board's been supportive. Anytime we've asked for staff or public safety kinds of things, you've been willing to do it. So we don't take that lightly, and I want you to know, we really do appreciate your support with that, and we hope it will have the desired effect of retention and recruitment so we fill the vacancies that we have within both departments. I'd also let you know, we did an employee climate survey. We just closed that out, so you'll have a report of that coming in the next several months that will cover all county departments, and then we've done an independent report within the police department that I'll have a report for you by the end of this month. So we'll talk more about that as we have sort of the feelings of our employees within all county departments and the police department specifically by the end of September for the police department. The other thing I would like to mention is our community conversations, our public outreach. We do have one scheduled for September 29th. It is at 6:00 p.m. It will be at the James City County Recreation Center. We will have the police department invited to talk about community, kinds of safety events and awareness within our communities, so that'll be one topic. We'll talk about our trash collection and maybe a path forward, and just helping residents understand where we are and see what kind of concerns or questions they may have. And then we're also going to talk about the need that you heard back in May for a new government center, so we can help the community understand why we believe we need to move forward with some facility to replace our current government complex here at Mount Bay. So those will be our topics. Again, that's September 29th at 6:00 p.m. I know we have some residents registered, and we'll continue to encourage people to be part of that towards the end of September, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, with that, we have no closed session this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to 1:00 p.m. on September 27th for our business meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.